Good evening. Welcome to the March 22 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:09 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Botman.
Here. And before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to mention that Councilmember Kasakian is at home nursing a cold. Nothing too serious, we hope, but he will be participating remotely and for that to take place, we need to have a motion to allow him to do that. So would somebody like to make the motion?
I would make the motion to allow Mr. Kasakian to participate due to a contagious illness.
Contagious illness.
A second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes. And with that, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all. And please remain standing briefly for the indication.
Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gaberino-Tangwa people.
Excuse me.
As we gather for today's city council meeting, let us reflect on the invaluable contributions of women to our community, our nation, and our world. In celebrating the achievements of women past and present, we recognize the tireless efforts and unwavering resilience that have shaped our society. As Women's History Month concludes this week, let us recommit ourselves to breaking down barriers and creating opportunities for all individuals to thrive regardless of gender. I'd like to leave you with the words of Shirley Chisholm, the first African-American woman elected to U.S. Congress. Chisholm states, "At present, our country needs women's idealism and determination, perhaps more in politics than anywhere else." Let us embrace this call to action, recognizing the vital role of women's voices in shaping our political landscape and advancing social progress. Thank you.
You may be seated. Mr. Moehl, one more outburst from you and we will not hesitate to have you removed from the chamber. That type of behavior is unacceptable in the Glendale City Council Chamber. Okay. With that, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the March 26, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on March 21, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And our first item.
The first item is Presentations on Appointments. Item A, Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, April 2, 2024, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor Botman. For next week, we have a series of meetings in the afternoon, starting with the Glendale Housing Authority, one item on that agenda, and that's going to be a public hearing for the approval of the Section 8 Public Works, I'm sorry, Public Housing Agency's annual plan for fiscal year 2425. We'll also have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority. That would just be issuing a proclamation designating April 1 to the 5th as National Community Development Week. And we'll finally have a special meeting of the City Council with two items on that agenda in the afternoon. Both of those items would be from community development. The first would be regarding a review of the City Council's priorities for certain proposed amendments to the municipal code. Those would be related to commercial districts regarding multifamily development standards and objective design standards for multifamily residential. The next item would be the consideration of processes to lease city-owned property. For the evening's council meeting, we have a number of, we don't have any consent items, we have one adoption of ordinance depending on how tonight's item for GWP goes, and that would be the adoption of an amendment to Ordinance Number 6016, establishing electric rates to add standby service riders for both medium business dispatchable rates and standby service rider for large business dispatchable rates. We have one action item from the Fire Department regarding a review of the Fire Services Master Plan produced by City Gate Associates. And we'll have two hearings to round out the night, both from community development. The first one would be regarding consideration of an ordinance amending Title 30 of the municipal code related to standards for design review, entitlement processes, parking requirements, and miscellaneous commercial zone cleanups. The second hearing would be a hearing on findings of violation as a result of unpermitted demolition of a historic resource located at 1239 North Everett Street.
Thank you very much. And what is next?
Next is a presentation by the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust.
Okay.
Mayor, would you like me to introduce?
Yes, please.
Representative. Mayor Botman, Member City Council, I want to invite Grant Henninger with Civic Homes, who's going to provide an update on the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust activities.
Thank you.
Mr. Henninger.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me tonight. I'm Grant Henninger with Civic Home. Civic Home is acting as the interim trust management agency for the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Regional Housing Trust. We've been working with the trust for a little bit more than a year now, and we wanted to just come to the city here and let you know what we've been working on, what we've accomplished, and kind of where we're going over, you know, the next little bit, you know, since the city is a member of the trust, and just want to keep you informed. Is there a clicker or do I just tell you to go to the next slide? I did not see one. Is it this one here? Sorry about that. Now I've gone too far. Okay, so for the past year, the trust has been getting kind of set up and started running. So in 2022, authorization for the trust was passed into state legislation through SB 1177, which was introduced by Senator Portantino. And along with that, the trust received $23 million from the state budget when, you know, times were a little bit better for the state budget a couple of years ago. But the trust has that money now to be able to fund affordable housing throughout the three cities. From having that authorization, authorizing legislation, we created a joint powers agreement between the three cities last May, so a little bit less than a year ago, and the board held its first meeting the very next day, May 3 of last year, with representatives from all three of the cities. And the mayor represents the city of Glendale on that board. So as I mentioned, the trust has received $23 million. From that $23 million, the trust can use up to 10% for running the trust, which allows the trust to continue running without any financial contributions from the city. You know, our goal is to ensure the city has money to build affordable housing, not for the city to fund the trust, which, you know, we think is the right way for money to be flowing. But that leaves about $20.7 million for affordable housing throughout the three cities. And one of the decisions that the trust has made over the past year is that that money should be split evenly between the three cities. So each city will receive approximately $6.9 million for affordable housing development in their city. Just recently, we have created an application form that each city can fill out to apply for those funds from the trust. The application form is fairly basic. It just provides trust staff enough information to give to the board so they can make an informed decision. And those applications will require action by city council before they can be submitted to the trust. And, you know, so I think, you know, all three cities will start to process through those applications and, you know, get them to their city councils and then get them to the trust for the board to make those decisions here over the next few months. And, you know, so that's kind of the big piece of what the trust will be doing, is getting money to the cities for affordable housing development. So just a little bit more kind of history and background, as I mentioned, Civic, Civic Home has been doing this interim trust management work for about a year now. The trust is in the process of hiring a permanent trust manager. The applications or the proposals for that work were just due last Friday, and the review process has begun for that, and we expect that a trust manager will be hired at the May board meeting of the trust. In addition, over the past, over the past year, we've created a budget for the trust to try to make good use of the administrative funds that we have. You know, that $2.3 million, we're hoping to, you know, last many years. And so, you know, we're, we have kind of a shoestring budget to try to keep the trusts going. But in addition to having Civic Home do the work of managing the trust, we've also brought on legal counsel, accounting, and we will be bringing on an auditor towards the end of the fiscal year in order to do the necessary audits and make sure that all the money is accounted for and going where it's supposed to be going, since obviously these are public funds. We've also purchased insurance for the trust. We've created a website and a logo. So if you are interested in the website, it is bgphousingtrust.org. And then we're also looking at additional funding applications that the trust can apply for. We've applied for some earmarks through the Senate, and we'll be looking at House earmarks as well, once those are available, as well as other state funding as it becomes available. Obviously, right now, there's not a lot of available state funding, but hopefully there will be in the future. And then we've, as I've mentioned, we've been kind of just setting up everything. So there's been a lot of policy documents that have been drafted and approved for accounting and, you know, finance manuals, an investment policy, a procurement policy, conflict of interest, all of those sorts of things. So, you know, that's what most of the past year has been, we've spent doing. And then the next steps, we want to get your money. You know, that's kind of the main next step. We're also keeping an eye out for what is happening with La Casa, the L.A. County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency. I think I got that right. And right now, La Casa is looking at how it's going to get funding, and, you know, we want to see how La Casa's funding can get moved into the city or into the trust and then onto the city to ensure that, you know, all three cities of the trust are getting their fair share of La Casa funding, and then monitoring other funding opportunities that might come up and to, you know, just promote the trust and the work that the cities are doing to create affordable housing. That is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Questions around the table? Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes. So in terms of splitting the funds evenly between the three cities, as much as I am for the cooperation between our agencies, there is a significance, significant disparity in terms of the population breakdown. Glendale has a much higher population, and based on statistics of those living in poverty, Glendale and even Pasadena have more of a need than Burbank. What is the logic behind splitting these funds evenly versus splitting it based on need?
There was some discussion of that question. You, I think what it came down to was it was the simplest way to do it, and that future sources of funding will, you know, kind of be split on, you know, need or, you know, depending on the source of funding, you know, what it can fund. So for instance, if the trust received homeless initiative funding, you know, that can only be spent on extremely low-income households, and it might be that some cities don't want to receive that funding. You know, so it might be, you know, split differently. So as part of our funding policy that was developed and approved by the board, you know, this first tranche of money, this first $23 million, would be split evenly, and then future funding to the trust may be split in different ways depending on what the needs and desires are of the cities.
I understand the need for perhaps making sure everyone at the table feels included, but I don't agree with the, I guess, logic of splitting it evenly between three agencies when some agencies may have a greater need for the funds than others. I certainly hope that the, our participating colleagues from our neighboring cities will make the best efforts to utilize these funds and actually build the affordable housing that they need to build. Thank you.
And one of the things that we talked about during the meetings was, how do we make this an ongoing trust, not just use up the money that we have and call it a day? So it's been a little while, but I thought that we applied for a couple grants, and we talked about creating a program for pre-development financing, if I remember right.
We have.
What's going on there?
So we have applied for a couple of different grants. So one of them that we applied for was the REAP 2.0 grant through SCAG, and we unfortunately did not receive that one. And now the entire REAP 2.0 program has been put on hold due to the state budget. So even if we had received it, it would have been a question mark at this point on whether we would have actually gotten that money. So we have been, we have been applying for other sources of funding. You know, we have not found success yet, but, you know, there will be sources of funding that, you know, we will be successful with in the future.
Okay. So that's still on the table, though, the idea of pre-development funding, kind of a pot of money to help with that early, early phase of costs before kind of standard development funding is available for most projects, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That's on the table. And, you know, as soon as we find a place to get it funded, I think that that's something that, you know, it certainly, it sounds like the board is interested in moving forward with in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item, 3C, we're going to push to next week, I believe, for reasons I'm not quite clear of, but maybe you can elucidate.
Mr. Mayor, later on this evening, there's an item for hiring a consultant to conduct the, this program, continue conducting this program. So staff wanted to have that done, completed first before awarding business certificates.
Okay. All right, very good. So we'll move on to our next item. Would you please read that into the record?
Yes. Item 3D is proclamation designating April 7 through 13, 2024 as National Library Week.
Okay. Who do we have from Library Arts and Culture here? Very good. Could you, three of you, please introduce yourselves first?
I'm Lesa Plia Lozada, Assistant Director of Glendale Library Arts and Culture.
Jenny Quinones Skinner, I'm a member of the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Trust, the fundraising side.
Evening. My name is James Lyle. I'm the Executive Director.
The Library Arts and Culture Trust.
Yes.
Okay, just to be sure. Okay, so I have a proclamation here, and it is very, very long. So rather than read the entire thing, staff was kind enough to give me a summary version. I'll read the summary version, and then I'll offer an opportunity for you to say a few words if you'd like. It's up to you. But we will, we will be proclaiming Library Week today. Libraries are a vital community hub, offering opportunities for connection, learning, and creativity. This year's theme is Ready, Set, Library, emphasizing libraries' role in supporting individuals at every stage in life, from storytime to homework help to the maker space. Libraries ensure equitable access to information and services, fostering inclusivity and promoting civic engagement. They provide essential resources for education, job-seeking, and entrepreneurship, contributing to local prosperity. On this occasion, I invite Glendale residents to explore our library arts and culture offerings in person and online, from books and movies, to online classes, and e-resources at www.eglendalelac... and e-resources at www.eglendalelac.org. Once again, www.eglendalelac.org. Let us celebrate the dedication of our library staff, the innovation of our libraries, and their profound impact on our community through the following. Contributions on Library Giving Day on April 3rd. Two, honoring library staff on Library Workers' Day on April 9th. And three, celebrating library innovation on National Library Outreach Day on April 10th. Now therefore, I, Daniel Brotman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, declare April 7th to 13th, 2024 as National Library Week. Thank you. And would any of you care to comment? Maybe you didn't think I was, we were going to call you up?
I was hoping I would smile today. No, I am also a librarian in my day job at our beautiful Glendale Community College. I would just like to say, we have the public library system that is the envy of all of our neighbors, from L.A. City to Pasadena to Burbank. And I say that in a way where I'm very proud as a community member of our Glendale Public Library and Arts. We offer an amazing opportunity for, from young, from young age to old age to all ages, to be able to explore, learn, and connect with their community in a way that is really unique. So I'm proud to be a member of the trust and to help support the library in any way that I can as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on behalf of staff, I'll just say thank you so much to the community for your continued support so that we can do our jobs for our community. We had a staff meeting this morning, and we were trying to describe Glendale Library Arts and Culture in one word. And a lot of the words that came up were inclusive, community, it was two words, but community-driven, loving, insightful, caring, all of these really emotive words that allow us to be such a strong city. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyle?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and council members. So just echoing what both Jenny and Les has already, have already said, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a great privilege to be a part of the trust. We support the work of the library and all its staff. To be on the outside as a separate 501(c)(3) entity, we have the honor of, of supporting the great efforts that the staff does. And, you know, it's really through the leadership of the city council, the city staff, but really the, the staff in the library itself. They do, they do such incredible work, providing the programs, the services, and being inclusive of, of the community so that they can get the resources, that they could enrich their lives, that, and, and that's what our role at the trust is, to, to support that so that anybody who walks through the library, anybody who goes to online to check out a book or to go through e-resources, that their lives are changed. And that's our effort. And we're grateful that the city council is putting that proclamation forward to recognize that. And I'd be remiss, you know, as the, as the nonprofit arm that raises money, that, you know, that we do have that library day, that to visit our website, glact.org, you know, to donate, and all those funds will help to support the programs, the services that exist. And, you know, through, through the city council, through public taxpayer dollars, that there are those services. But to go above and beyond and to provide even more services, that, that's where the trust comes in, through the donations from the community to, to support things like the maker space, the reflect space, the, the sound space. You know, all of those things are funded through the support of the community. So I want to thank you. I want to encourage others to participate in Library Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, don't, don't leave. I'm going to present this proclamation and we get to take a photo together. Okay. Okay, let's stand here together. We'll have our professional photographer with his eyes.
Everybody say, "Shh."
Why don't you hold it?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I have a comment, a comment card, I should say.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I go to, I go to Glendale Public Library often to check out DVDs, the movies. I love them all, okay? When I go there, I see lots of people at the library. And I speak with some strangers. You know me, I talk with everybody. And I find that often the people I speak with do not live in Glendale. They live in Long Beach. They live in Eagle Rock, Pasadena, L.A., but not in Glendale. Why? Because Glendale Library is spectacular. I remember back in, I think it was 1975, I came to Glendale with the wife, and the, and the library had just been opened. And I remember the missus saying to me, "Wow, Mike, this place is so beautiful. Where are they serving dinner? It's so beautiful." Okay? Unfortunately, because of the internet, libraries are not being used like they used to be, unfortunately. And that's sad. Now, here's something that some people are not going to like. But, you know, the city's always trying to cut back, to save money someplace. We have a lot of libraries in the city that are not being used 100%. I'm sure if we reduce some of those smaller libraries and consolidate maybe just two or three within the city, it would be more practical. Don't get me wrong. I like the library. But we are, we are under tough economic times right now. And we're looking for, we're looking for ways to raise money to pay for the pensions and the salaries. After all, it was only a few days ago that you didn't want to close the landfill because you need the revenue. Use that revenue to pay for the pensions and so forth. But let's get back to the library. Our library is beautiful. It's significant. Like I said, when the missus first came to see it, it was like being at a high-end restaurant. And I've met, quite often met some of the staff at the library, and they do a pretty good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. What's our next item on presentations?
The next item is item E, commendation recognizing Tara Peterson, outgoing CEO of the YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena.
Okay. Well, this is a special occasion. And Tara, we have a proclamation. No, we don't have a proclamation. We have a mayor's commendation for you. And I'm actually going to turn it over to my colleague, Ellen Asatrian, because she requested that we do this. And I think she probably has some things she would like to say first.
Thank you. We are closing off Women's History Month. And with that same theme, the amount of work that you've put into this community and the ripple effects of your work for women and girls is going to have ripple effects in this city and in this community for generations to come. I'm sad that we're losing you. I believe your last day at the Glendale YWCA was Friday. But I know that someone with your passion doesn't stop the work. And while you'll be moving up to the Bay Area, I look forward to our collaboration in getting state funding and federal funding to continue the work. I definitely say a couple of things I want to highlight. Tara came on in 2016 as the Executive Director for the YWCA. And she brought with her over 20 years of experience addressing domestic violence, youth violence, sexual assault, and reproductive rights. She's been advocating on the federal and state levels to secure resources and funding. And during her tenure, she got the budget to go from $1.3 million to $3 million for our local chapter. I know that I can speak firsthand in how accessible you have made the YWCA Glendale-Pastina. I remember back in the days when I would get phone calls, I would be hesitant to just send people to the YWCA because there were language barriers. We weren't sure what the structure would be like. And I know that in, in recent years with you at the helm, that has significantly changed the amount of programs that you have developed. And the kind of employee structure that you have brought in is truly reflective of the community that the YWCA Glendale-Pastina serves. And I would be remiss not to say that our city has gone through some very difficult years. Last couple of years have been. And it takes people like you who take those opportunities to create bridges instead of divides. And I am personally immensely grateful, just as I think many are in this community, to have had you. But this is not going to be goodbye. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I had the opportunity of working with you all. I think all of you all served as mayor except for one person at my time being here. And so I had the opportunity to work with you all. And I think we accomplished great things together for the YWCA. I committed my life service to advancing equity and gender, ending gender-based violence. And we would not be able to do the work without the City of Glendale and their support. Together, we expanded our 10-bed shelter to a 16-bed shelter. We renovated our Lexington facility with ADA compliance and, and sprinklers so that we can be fire safety for our participants and the children and our, that come to the YWCA. We stood together in the face of racial reckoning, and we advocated for the Sun Downtown Resolution. And we would not have been able to do all of that without your support. And I'm just really proud to have served the YWCA Glendale. And it's 95-year history of eliminating racism, empowering women. And I know that the board and the staff is committed to that mission, regardless who's at the, at the helm. And I just think great things are going to continue to happen as this community continues to evolve and move forward. So again, thank you so much for your support. I'm going to miss the City of Glendale. I had a lot of great memories and just really, really grateful to be, to be of service and that we were able to come together and help thousands and thousands of women and children in our community who needed help. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I will read the commendation. Well, we can, we can clap. Let me read it. Let me read the commendation because there's a lot of good text here. Thanks to Councilmember Asatrian. Tara Peterson, Executive Director of the Glendale and Pasadena YWCA, has been a steadfast advocate for gender and racial equity. An expert in violence against women, her work revived the YWCA's legacy, expanding key programs and sparking crucial conversations. Her co-founding of the Coalition for an Anti-Racist Glendale and her role in crafting Glendale's Sun Downtown Resolution in 2020 stand as testament to her dedication to championing equality for all. On behalf of the City of Glendale, we thank you for your years of service, and we wish you success in all your future endeavors. Signed by me, Daniel Brotman. And--
And I'm also a new grandmother. So that's another reason why I'm going back up north. Yeah, so thank you.
But I want to personally thank you for the, the many hours we spent together talking. I learned a lot from you. I remember in 2020, just after I got elected, we had the George Floyd murder. And we talked a lot about Sun Downtown, our Sun Downtown history and what we should do and, and worked together quite a bit to put that resolution together. I'm very, very proud of that. And, and I appreciate that you were always very thoughtful about how we approach this delicate subject in, in, in a city which has the past that it has. And, and it was great, great working with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I think we have other comments.
Yes, I, I would like to wish you the best. And, you know, we've worked together now for eight years. And you've just been a force for the YW. I mean, actually bringing it together with Pasadena, et cetera. So can I call you grandma?
Yes. Ta-ta.
I know, I've seen the pictures on, on Facebook. Congratulations on that. I just wish you all the best in whatever you, you attempt. I know you'll be successful in whatever that is, even if it's retirement and enjoying your grandchild.
I wish.
Loved having you. I know, you'll be missed.
Thank you. Thank you, I'll miss you too, Paula. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations on a great run in Glendale. And I'm not sure if they said you're going to continue your advocacy in, in the Bay Area.
Yes.
But I certainly hope that you do that. And there's some big shoes to be filled at the Glendale passing a YMCA, YWCA. So I hope they're up to the task to, in, in some way, find someone to replace you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ara.
Councilmember Kosakian?
Allow me to also extend my congratulations to you on your retirement from the Glendale YWCA, Tara. Running a nonprofit is a challenge in and of itself. It can be very difficult. And to run the YWCA, as you did during the time that you did under the circumstances and with the mission that you embraced fully, wasn't always easy. But you managed to do it, and Glendale is better off for you and the YWCA's work. So thank you. And I wish you good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Arti. Yes, thank you. And I just want to really thank my board and their staff. And I know they're to commit it to this transition. And there's lots of great opportunities ahead for the YWCA. And we're, they're there to be of service and to be there for anybody in need. So again, thank you so much for this, for this moment and allowing me to be here to say goodbye. I appreciate it.
Don't go away yet.
Okay.
Who's camera is that? I want to make sure we--
One more. One more, Ara.
Want to make sure we--
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Were you the chair at the time?
Okay. Onto our business agenda. What is, what's that?
Next star--
Oh, oh, I have a card.
That you have a card--
I have a card for this. I have a card from Mike Mohill.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to congratulate all five council members for congratulating a black racist, Tara Peterson. I'll say it again. She is a black racist. She supported Black Lives Matter, Ellen, which called for the defunding of the police department. And burglaries went up, and crime went up in the city.
First Amendment. Okay. We want, there's no, no reason to respond to any of that drivel. Let's move on.
Consent items, items including minutes, the following our routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Okay, any, okay, on 4B. Okay. We have two members of the audience who would like to pull 4B. I have a feeling it's not really about 4B, but we'll see.
I'll, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
The balance of the calendar. Okay, Councilmember Devine is second. Councilmember Asatrian. Let's have roll call on that, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Botman.
Yes. And what is next?
Next, our City Council and staff comments.
I'd like to begin. Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to re-announce the passing of a pillar of our community, Ralph Sam Tufankian. I did mention his passing two weeks ago. Ralph Tufankian, husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, passed away peacefully on March 11th, 2024, at his home in Glendale. He was born to Virginia Bedig and Sam Tufankian in Los Angeles, and was one of four children, Marion, Virginia Mae, Billy, and himself. Ralph graduated from LA High School in 1944, after which he entered the US Army and served in the Pacific Theater during World War II. When the war ended, he moved to Okinawa, Japan, where he joined the US Air Force and became a turbo-supercharged specialist for the B-29 bomber. In 1958, Ralph married Savi Shirvanyan. Together, Ralph and Savi had three children, Richard, Sandra, and Greg. Tragically, they lost their son, Richard, in 1990. But instead of being defeated, Ralph and Savi embarked on a new and very important part of their life, providing for and helping Armenian children. Ralph worked at Vako Industries, a manufacturer of high-pressure valves used in the aerospace industry, as well as on all nuclear-powered submarines. In 1970, he founded Stag Equipment Corporation, where he designed and received three US patents for waste containers. He later joined Western Waste Industries as VP of Corporate Products, assisting in the development of six solid waste landfills and the construction of five waste transfer and recycling stations. Ralph is survived by his son Greg and his wife Caroline Tufankian, who is a commissioner. And by the way, Ralph also was a City of Glendale Commissioner. He's also survived, survived by his daughter Sandra and her husband Paul Kalamkarian, by grandchildren Sarah and her husband Sam, Lisa and her husband Michael, and Lena and her husband Max, by great-grandchildren Micah, Ani, Ambrose, Sofeen, and Clement, by brother-in-law Costi, and Marion Shirvanyan, and many more family and friends who joined one another at his memorial services held earlier last week. Donations may be made to St. Mary Richard Tufankian Preschool and to the Armenian Educational Foundation Richard Tufankian Fund. And I would request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory.
May to go next?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to send out kudos to Edith Fuentes, and George Cicley, and all the other committee members that worked on Unique Fest at the YMCA. They had over 800 people at the festival this year. It was fantastic. Singing, dancing, food, but a wonderful way to bring the community together, all of the community, all different cultures. It was just fantastic as usual. So, congratulations to them. The Cherry Blossom Festival was held again. I'm very proud of that. It is, was the fifth anniversary. I want to thank Oni Balikian, he's out there, and for, for being instrumental in, in getting this, this program into our city. Last year, I brought pictures of the sumo wrestlers. I didn't do that this year, but they were there, and they were great. So, it's, again, another very, very successful year. And I don't know if you know, and I just learned this, that it is the 50th anniversary of the Tea House. So, it's a fifth for the Cherry Blossom Festival, and 50 years for the beautiful, beautiful Tea House. Finally, and then, what I wanted to mention was at the, at the Cherry Blossom Festival, along with Council General Sony, there was also the ambassador or representative of the government of Japan, Ito Naioki. And he presented me, he knew that I was of Ukrainian heritage. And he wanted to let me know, and I'm just really pleased to let all of you know, that there was a Japan-Ukrainian conference for the promotion of economic growth and reconstruction. And Japan is going to help the Ukraine in their, in their rebuilding of their country when this horrific war is over. So, I wanted to, to mention that, and that, how wonderful it is that these countries work together, and that Japan is a friend of ours. And finally, as a wonderful way to wrap up International Women's History Month, the mayor and I attended the Seroptimist International Glendale Live Your Dream Grant Awards. They awarded over almost $50,000 to nonprofits, and I see a friend is there in the audience, service grants to nonprofits like Arc Family Center, Door of Hope, Girls on the Run. These organizations help young girls and women become empowered. And fantastic. And then, the Live Your Dream Awards go to mostly single women with children who are trying to get a college education. Six of the awardees go to Glendale Community College. It was really heartrending to, to see, and, just a wonderful, wonderful way to end this terrific month of recognizing women. So, I just wanted to send out congratulations to Seroptimist International of Glendale. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Just two items. Last week, we had the honor of accepting a delegation from the Philippines. Mayor Botman and mayor from our sister city, Santa Rosa, Arlene RCS, signed the official memorandum of understanding. Fabak also held an event that night. But it looks like they're going to be putting together a plan of action for us to actually be working together. And then I look forward to having the staff report back on how we make the sister-city relationships more productive. And then, second, I, along with our city clerk, attended the LA County's 39th Annual Women of the Year Celebration. There were about 550 people present. My understanding is that this was the first time that the City of Glendale has participated in this event. I would love for us to be more mindful of our participation on regional bodies and events that are just beyond the scope that we've currently had. I also had the opportunity to meet the Women's Fire Alliance at the event, which is a support system for women who are in the fire, but also creates support system and mentorship for other women in other departments. And one of their focus points is also working with women firefighters in cities that have just a few. And so, I did ask that we meet with them, and I'll be looking to, working with our chief to, to collaborate on ways that we can move the needle forward here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes, thank you. I just want to join Councilmember and colleague Najarian in expressing condolences to the Tufankian family on the loss of their patriarch. Ralph Tufankian was a pillar in the community. He and his wife, late wife, Savi, did great things, not the least of which is founding a preschool in memory of their son. That was taken far too early. A preschool that many have benefited from, including my own son. But more than just a preschool, they were involved in every aspect of the community life, the Armenian-American community, the Glendale community, and, you know, through his service in our armed forces to our great country. He was not a man of many words, but he was a very powerful figure in terms of how, when he spoke, people did listen. And the work that he did with his late wife is going to continue to live on. The legacy lives on, obviously, in his kids and grandkids and great-grandkids. But it's a great loss for all of us. So, that's the only comment I had. Other than that, you know, it's, I'm unfortunately not able to be with you all because after a very brief travels, I came back with a really severe cold. And I'll be participating in the remainder of the meeting from my home. I'm alone in this room, and there's no one else with me. I, I don't know if that's a declaration I need to make under AB 2449, or whatever the state provisions are, but I'll make it anyways. And that's all. Hopefully, we have a fairly short meeting. I'll see how long I'm able to last. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there was a lot going on this past week. I have two other things to mention. One is, earlier today, we held a press event with three parties, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the City of Glendale Community Services and Parks, and with a group called the American Green Zone Alliance. And the purpose of the, of the press event was to announce that Glendale has received American Green Zone Alliance certificate, certification for all of its parks and landscaped areas. What that means is, we have converted all of our gas two-stroke handheld blowers, trimmers, and edgers to electric alternatives. We are the largest single green zone city in the entire United States. So, that's not just the county, not just the state, but the entire country. We're going to be saving money by doing this, and we are going to be able to help clean the air, reducing carbon dioxide emissions, reducing emissions of pollutants which cause smog and ozone, such as carbon monoxide, particulate matter, volatile organic compounds, NOx, and other things. This is a tremendous achievement, about five years in the making. And the intent here is that we want to get rid of gas landscape equipment across our community because it is so polluting and so harmful. But we wanted to walk the walk. We wanted to show that we can do it. And we wanted to make sure that we worked out the kinks. So, that's why it took so long. We started off with eight of our smaller mini-parks, tested it out there. We had some hiccups. We worked through those. And then we rolled it out to all of our parks. So, I'm very proud that I was able to announce that today. Councilmember Najarian was there. And I know the rest of us are all in great support of this. And there's a phase two, which is going to be now looking at the opportunity to convert some of our other equipment, sit-down mowers and, and other heavier-duty equipment to electric as soon as the technology allows. So, that was one thing. The other thing was, I attended the opening of our Third Place, which is a new drop-in center for youth age 15 to 25, owned and operated by Didi Hirsch Mental Health Services. Our Third Place is a new facility that they set up, which provides basic necessities for youth, including showers, hygiene kits, free meals, a community kitchen, and laundry facilities. It also offers individual group, individual and group therapy, I should say, supports youth with navigating paperwork and applications to access health care, transportation, housing, and other essential services. There's also, in fact, a studio space that encourages creative expression through arts and music. The whole space was designed by youth for youth. It's really a very impressive place, and anyone can drop in and take advantage of their services. The address is 1540 East Colorado Street, right near Glendale High School.
Scarentino's Restaurant.
Right next to that.
Scarentino's Restaurant.
Yes, right next to that. And they're open Monday through, Monday and Friday from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday and Thursday from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Really worth taking a look.
Can I mention one other, a couple other things? They serve youth from 15 years of age to 25. And the thing that I'm very proud of is the fact that our library and staff collaborate with them. to be with you all because after a very brief travels, I came back with a really severe cold. And I'll be participating in the remainder of the meeting from my home. I'm alone in this room, and there's no one else with me. I don't know if that's a declaration I need to make under AB 2449 or whatever the state provisions are, but I'll make it anyways. And that's all. Hopefully, we have a fairly short meeting. I'll see how long I'm able to last. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there was a lot going on this past week. I have two other things to mention. One is earlier today, we held a press event with three parties, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the City of Glendale, Community Services and Parks, and with a group called the American Green Zone Alliance. And the purpose of the, of the press event was to announce that Glendale has received American Green Zone Alliance certification for all of its parks and landscaped areas. What that means is we have converted all of our gas two-stroke handheld blowers, trimmers, and edgers to electric alternatives. We are the largest single green zone city in the entire United States. So that's not just the county, not just the state, but the entire country. We're going to be saving money by doing this, and we're going to be able to help clean the air, reducing carbon dioxide emissions, reducing emissions of pollutants which cause smog and ozone, such as carbon monoxide, particulate matter, volatile organic compounds, NOx, and other things. This is a tremendous achievement, about five years in the making. And the intent here is that we want to get rid of gas landscape equipment across our community because it is so polluting and so harmful. But we wanted to walk the walk. We wanted to show that we can do it. And we wanted to make sure that we worked out the kinks. So that's why it took so long. We started off with eight of our smaller mini-parks, tested it out there. We had some hiccups. We worked through those, and then we rolled it out to all of our parks. So I'm very proud that I was able to announce that today. Councilmember Najarion was there. And I know the rest of us are all in great support of this. And there's a phase two, which is going to be now looking at the opportunity to convert some of our other equipment, sit-down mowers and other heavier duty equipment to electric as soon as the technology allows. So that was one thing. The other thing was I attended the opening of Our Third Place, which is a new drop-in center for youth age 15 to 25, owned and operated by D.D. Hirsch Mental Health Services. Our Third Place is a new facility that they set up, which provides basic necessities for youth, including showers, hygiene kits, free meals, a community kitchen, and laundry facilities. It also offers individual group, individual and group therapy, I should say, supports youth with navigating paperwork and applications to access health care, transportation, housing, and other essential services. There's also, in fact, a studio space that encourages creative expression through arts and music. The whole space was designed by youth for youth. It's really a very impressive place, and anyone can drop in and take advantage of their services. The address is 1540 East Colorado Street, right near Glendale High School.
Scarentino's Restaurant.
Right next to that.
Scarentino's Restaurant.
Yes, right next to that. And they're open Monday through, Monday and Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday and Thursday from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Really worth taking a look.
Can I mention another, a couple other things? They serve youth from 15 years of age to 25. And the thing that I'm very proud of is the fact that our library and staff collaborate with them. And if they see a young person at the library that appears to need help in any way, mental health issues, whatever they can kind of tell, they are working with Our Third Place. And you want to explain why, how they got the name Our Third Place between?
Yeah, they said, you know, your first place is home, your second place is school. Some people need a third place to go. They're not getting what they need at home for whatever reason. Maybe school isn't the place they're comfortable. So this is a place that's, it's very relaxed, very welcoming, and it's, feels safe. So great place for kids to drop in. No appointments needed, as far as I know.
They've only been open like for a month or two, and they've already had 70, 70 young people come through.
Okay. Staff, any comments? No? No comments. Okay. We'll move on then to community event announcements.
We do not have any cards or callers for community event announcements.
Okay. So what is next?
Next, our action items. Action item A, public works regarding award of a professional services agreement to administer Glendale's green business program. One, motion authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute a new PSA with a 501(c)(3) organization, Sustainable Works, a project of Community Partners, for $155,250 to administer Glendale's green business program for one year.
Mr. Galanian?
Yeah. Mayor Brotman, my city council. This is a really great program that we offer to businesses in the city that adopt sustainable business practices. And in order to be able to continue this successful program, we need a new professional services agreement for the administration of the program. And with that, I'll turn it over to Regina Wheeler, our recycling coordinator, to present a report for your consideration.
Hello. Oh, I don't know if your mic is on. I can't hear you.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman and city council. My name is Regina Wheeler. I'm the recycling coordinator here at the city of Glendale. I manage Glendale's green business program, and I'm here to provide some information about the program and the item that we have on the agenda today. So just some brief background about Glendale's green business program. So our green business program is part of a statewide program that is part of the California Green Business Network. So this, the green business program is, is, is a network of 50 cities and counties throughout the state that has, that, that are all throughout the, that are all throughout the region. They go from San Diego to Marin County. And with this program, there are certain measures that each business must meet to be certified. So the, there are two different certification checklists for these business types. We currently certify three different business types in the city, which are office, retail, and restaurant sectors. The city of Glendale started the green business program in 2019. It was a rough start here for the program because it was very new, and we had to do a lot of direct outreach to businesses to get them interested and to know about the program. And then COVID started in, throughout the program, and that, that reduced interest with businesses in the program because there was time to get through the certification process. So currently, we have 77 business certifications with, in Glendale's program. And these certifications last for two years. So you, once you get certified, you stay certified for two years, once you become a certified business. So this last year, when we started the program back up after COVID, we had a contract that ran from March 2023 to this past March. And we informed over 200 businesses about the program and told them what was expected to become certified. And we ended up enrolling 30 businesses in the program, but because certification takes a number of months, we were only able to certify 17 businesses during this contract period. Of those 17 businesses, two of them were recertifications. And you can see on this slide the names of the businesses that were in this program. A lot of them are small to medium-sized businesses because those are the businesses that we're targeting. They need some help and assistance in knowing what programs are out there and how to do some of these efficiency measures that are part of the, the green business program. So overall, the, the 77 certified businesses that we have had in Glendale's green business program since the beginning, these are the metrics, or potentially the environmental offsets that all of these businesses have helped the, the city obtain. So with greenhouse gas reductions, we've offset about 143,530 pounds of carbon dioxide. We've saved 245,411 kilowatts. We've diverted about 225,510 pounds of waste, and we've saved 534,924 gallons of water, and we've saved 656 gallons of fuel, and we've reduced about 370 gallons of waste. And this has only been achieved because we've provided direct assistance to all of these businesses and told them how this can be done and what, what measures they can make at their individual businesses to install these practices. So you may be wondering, how does the certification process work and what's involved with getting a business to be green and to actually become certified? Well, as I previously said, we only certify small to medium-sized businesses. And the process typically, our average, on the average, it takes about three to six months to perform. So first of all, before we start with outreach and things like that, to actually make the connection, and then we start phase one. And phase one performs an onsite visit of that business to figure out what exists at the property and, and what their lighting is, what appliances they have, and everything along those lines. And then we go out and look and see what, what needs to be done to make this property more efficient, to make it more energy-saving. And then we provide some guidance and educate the business about what they can do to help become green and to reduce their water bills and, and save energy and to reduce waste. And then we provide individual guidance, rebates, and assistance to become green. So the program features, in summary, are going to be, as I previously said, reducing waste and, and water use. We're going to provide them information and sometimes samples of less toxic cleaners and where they can buy them. And we're also going to give them assistance and connections to their franchise hauler and help them to reduce waste at their business. And if they're a restaurant, we'll help them with food waste diversion. We also tell them how they can help to reduce transportation-related carbon emissions and potentially purchasing greener supplies. So we, part of the incentives of this program, as I, as I have said, is that we provide free samples, and, and we often work with GWP to do retrofits. And we assist with, at individual property sites, with helping them install like water-efficient aerators and, and things along those lines because it, those things are very easy, and sometimes the properties are not sure about how to get that done. And this is just a general summary of how we do a waste assessment. It's a very simple process, and it only takes a few minutes. But we look and see what the property is doing and, and what is actually in their waste, and what they can do to actually reduce the current waste that they have at their property. Do they need additional bins? Do they need to potentially buy less products? What can they do to actually make themselves more, more efficient and reduce their garbage bill? It's a very simple process, but sometimes they just need someone to talk to them and give them the resources. So what have we been doing to make the program as successful as it has been? So a lot of it has been door-to-door outreach, but we've also been doing just general outreach to the business community. We've been doing some outreach in city connections, Chamber of Commerce, the sustainability newsletters, economic development, and the local Chamber of Commerce newsletters. And we have been doing, we're doing our Certified Green Business Awards, which we hope to do in the near future. And we are also working with other city initiatives, as I previously said, which is on the food recovery. When we actually talk to businesses about food recovery, we're also speaking to them about green business. So it's sort of a, a one-on-one effort on the same programs. So the items that we're trying to speak to you about or present is a new contract with the same company that we worked on last year, which was very successful, which is a company called Community Partners. So this company actually works with three local cities and, and helps administer their green business programs. And so we are here tonight to ask that you approve a contract for Community Partners to administer our green business program again here at Glendale for another year from May 1, 2024 to April 30th, 2025 for $155,250. And with this money, they will enroll at least 30 new businesses in the program, and they will certify 15 to 20 businesses with that, with those funds. And they will always include organics, recycling, and mandatory green business measures with that certification process. And of course, they're going to be doing more outreach. The, the certifications is only the final step. They're going to be speaking to a number of businesses. I typically say they have to do outreach to fortify businesses to get one enrolled. So it's a lot of outreach to get to the final step. So, so we are giving as many incentives as we can. We're currently offering a rebate to our businesses, which we are, which we achieve through a grant that we got through the California Green Business Network. So we are, we're hopping with that to incentivize businesses by providing that. And we are also using incentives that are available through Glendale Water and Power to, and other resources that the city may have to help incentivize businesses. So this partnership that we have with Community Partners, they will be doing the one-on-one outreach, generate the reports that we need to submit back to the state for this program, and, and actually do the one-on-one outreach with businesses. So our recommendation tonight, our staff's recommendation, is to approve the motion executing a new PSA with Sustainable Works, $455,000 to administer and provide direct outreach to the green business program through April 30th, 2025, to decrease water and energy use and reduce waste generation and also reduce transportation emissions and increase the purchasing of environmental preferable products. And we're here to answer any questions you, that you may have.
Any questions? Councilmember Kusakian?
For the community outreach portion, is the information also provided in different languages?
So yes, we currently plan to go to the Small Business Summit, and we are working on translating the current flyer that, that we're doing. And we have staff available that can speak different languages as well.
So I'm, I'm not sure about Spanish TV or Korean or whatnot, but I also know that for Armenian television networks, there are a variety of shows that would allow city, I have said this time and again, to our department heads, to our city manager, they would be more than happy to have staff or a spokesperson from the city join on the shows to educate and to make aware of not just this program, maybe you combine it with other things that we have going on. I definitely would like to see that beyond the, just the flyer, that we are integrating ethnic media into our outreach. And I see that you have a PSA, and I'm hoping that PSA also is in the languages. And, you know, maybe this is a question for our city manager, Galanian. I know that when, some, some years back, when we were working with L.A. County, and actually, as a matter of fact, with the city of Glendale as well, when there's a certain threshold of a certain population in a city, the law requires that the, the translations or the materials be done automatically, that, like, we won't have to request that as council members, or you wouldn't have to request that as staff. I'd like for us to, to, to look into that because it, you know, I know that only certain contracts come to us for us to be able to have this discussion, but I think there needs to be an overarching theme of how we're getting to the communities where they're at, not just, because it's also like word of mouth. And then I think the, the second just comment that I have, I recognize that this is part of a state program, but looking at ways that we can include our own local incentive programs and kind of maybe move the needle even further is something that I'm interested in and would like to see if it's possible for staff at some point to bring something back with that respect. But I think the community outreach portion is really the big part of it. I have no issue with paying the funds. I just want to make sure that we're not just doing checkboxes and, you know. Thank you.
Councilmember Devine?
I have a question. You mentioned in the report, objectives, enroll 30 new businesses. Are there provisions in the contract that address the fact that they do or they do not get to the 30 businesses?
There are specific requirements for speaking to the businesses, but not the numbers that they, at the end, that they actually certify, because some of them are in process at the end of the contract period. Because the certification process takes three to six months, we, we currently have a couple that are still ending, are in the, are at the final stages of the certification process. So they will be completed in a couple of...
And do you count those in the 30? I mean, would you count those in the, you know, those that are in process, or not until they are certified?
Correct. Right. So they, they will be certified in, when the next contract begins.
Okay. And I noticed that the numbers went down this year.
It was difficult at this beginning year because we had, we had a complete lapse with COVID. So we did not have a contract the, the previous year.
Oh, okay.
Right. That's the reason why our numbers were not as high.
Seven, because the previous year we had 24, then this...
Right. Well, we, so between March, so there was, I don't have that slide up. So the, one of the contracts ended in July, and then we had a break for a few months in between.
Oh, I got you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Member Najarion?
No, I'm good with the...
Councilmember Kusakian?
I, I think that if we can achieve everything that has been set out in terms of goals, if you can get 30 businesses in a year to embrace a cleaner, greener objectives, I think that's money well spent. I support this contract and look forward to seeing what work they're able to achieve in a year.
Okay. And I'm just curious about how we're aligning whatever we're doing with businesses with the other programs that we have. I know we're, we're reaching out to businesses around the polystyrene ban and our foods, footwear-on-request ordinance. Are, are these the same people that are talking to the businesses, or do we have two groups going out and kind of covering some of the same ground?
So we've met with those staff to get the information that they provide so that our consultant can provide the same information. We also have resources from GWP so we can provide their information at the same time.
So are, is, is a business going to be getting visited by two different people with overlapping information, or if one of the folks from, what's this organization called, Community Partners, if one of them go to, let's say, Urartu Coffee, that somebody else isn't going to show up and, and kind of talk about the same stuff?
Well, typically, how it will work, it depends who talks to the customer first. So with green business, it's, it takes a few months to go through the certification process. So we may let them know about a program that another department has because we have flyers with us. But if the, if, say, the, if the sustainability department, if a representative from their department gets to them first, they also have information about our department, and they may say, I mean, I'm sorry, about our program, and may say, if you're interested, please contact this representative about it. So we always have information about both programs. So because our program only targets small to medium-sized businesses, so we don't get to this, all of the same customers. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we're coordinated, you know? If somebody goes out to talk to a business about... If somebody goes out to talk to a business about the green certification, they should know if somebody's already been there to talk about polystyrene, foodware on request, or some other program that we have. So are we, are you confident that the groups are exchanging information enough that they know who's touching, you know, which businesses?
So we, it's, I think that the businesses have to be told about both programs, and we're aware, both organizations are aware that each group is speaking to businesses about them. Because from my understanding, our certification process, if they're interested, it's the only time we follow up again. It's just a, it's a direct contact to inform them, and then we don't go back. Our staff doesn't go back to speak to the business again.
Okay, so Mayor, what we can is we can obviously coordinate with our counterparts and see what their approach is to their direct contact. And we could see if there's any overlap and how we can improve that process. But we can have that communication with our partners in the other departments.
Okay, okay. And then, do we get anything from, we get any funding from the state to do this?
So we currently, or last year, we got a $30,000 grant from the California Green Business Network. And we were able to use that money to help assist with this program. And staff decided to use that funding to provide rebates to businesses to help make the certification process easier. Due to the fact that the city just revamped our green business program, we decided to use that funding to provide rebates to businesses. So we provided up to $1,500 per business for this past year to assist with the certification process. And some of these, some of this funding was used to assist with, say, HVAC maintenance or to provide other products that businesses needed to get through the, to get through the certification process.
But the participating business will get some financial benefit if they're installing a new HVAC system or they're doing something like that. You're saying there could be some funds that we give to defray some of those costs, right?
Correct.
As well as getting to put, you know, the seal of approval in their window.
Correct, and we will put them on our website as well, and they get a sticker for their window as well.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, I know that there are these kind of minimum requirements to achieve the green business certification that are statewide, right, that are consistent statewide. Are we able to add anything on to that? I mean, sometimes I find, you know, some of these programs are pretty vanilla, and the bar is pretty low, right? It's still good that we're getting out, we're talking to businesses, we're getting them to do something. But I'm kind of thinking, you know, maybe we have two tiers, you know? Maybe we have like silver and gold or something, you know? For the businesses that are really knocking it out of the park, is there a way we can provide, you know, a higher level of recognition? Maybe some more benefits? And I don't know what those would be. But I'm just interested in, maybe that's for a discussion for another time. But I'm interested in that.
Well, we added the food recovery and the SB 1383. Those were not specific requirements, but we added that as a measure because of the fact that we wanted to be sure that businesses were implementing municipal code requirements. So there are, we can add that, but that would be up to staff's or recommendation.
Okay, so we can add.
Right.
We just can't subtract, but we don't want to. And that's good. So we're saying that they have to be compliant with our codes around plastics and around organic diversion. Well, that's good. Okay, I have no other questions. Do we have any comments or any public comment on this?
We do not.
No, okay. Okay, I will take a motion then.
Move item 8A.
Second. Okay, so 8A1, moved by Councilmember Devine, seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Let's have roll call, please.
Councilmembers, as Adrian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kosakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman.
Yes. Our next item, please.
Next item is Action Item B, Glendale Water and Power, regarding amending ordinance number 6016, establishing the electric rates for Glendale Water and Power for fiscal years 2024 to 2027 to add the standby service rider for medium business dispatchable and the standby service rider for large business dispatchable rates. One introduction of ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Brotman, City Council. If you recall, on November 28 of 2023, last year, council adopted GWP's electric rate increases that went into effect January 1 of this year. During the implementation of these new rates, staff noticed that the new rates for standby service for medium and large businesses were not included in the rate tables. Hence, the need to amend the existing ordinance to fix this discrepancy. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle Knoll, has a very long title, so bear with me, Utility Business Systems Support Administrator, to present this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brotman and Councilmembers. Well, my brother's out there. My name is Michelle Knoll, as you said, Utility Business Systems Support Administrator for GWP. I'll be presenting the introduction of the ordinance, amending ordinance number 6016, establishing the electric rates for 2024 through 2027. I'm going to give you a little background on this. So on November 14, 2023, there was the introduction of the ordinance number 6016 for the COSA electric rates. On November 28, the adoption of the rates went into effect. And on January 1, 2024, phase one of the adopted rates were implemented. During the rate implementation of the electric rates into the GWP Customer Service Information and Billing System, the rate implementation team that the, the rate implementation team found that the medium and large dispatchable standby service rider rates were omitted from the rate tables in the ordinance, but that they were considered and included in the COSA. During the development and adoption of the COSA, GWP didn't have any customers utilizing the standby service rider rates. We took this opportunity to review the standby service rider and consider their appropriateness of the old method of determining customer demand. As a result, GWP is recommending changes that will standardize charges with both a billable monthly demand option and a TOU rate option. There is a small group of cogeneration customers who are expected to utilize these rates in the next year, in this year, actually. So what are the standby service rider rates? A service rider is exactly what it sounds like. It's a rider on top of a standard, medium, and large commercial rate. But the rider is specifically for cogeneration or self-generation commercial customers. In the current rate structure, GWP provides or reserves standby generation capacity for cogeneration customers with large amounts of dispatchable self-generation behind the meter and provides generation service to these customers if and when their self-service generation, their self-generation systems fail or they have an unscheduled outage. Or a system maintenance, sorry. For customers utilizing this service, GWP incurs cost to procure and ensure generation capacities for these customers is available. There are two additional rate components to this rider. The reservation charge, just like its name, procures and reserves GWP's capacity in anticipation of a system outage. The flat charge is based on the max capacity of the customer's system. The backup service rider is another component of this rate and would apply only during the billing period of the customer's outage or maintenance. This is just a visual of what the standby service rate structure looks like and a sample of the rate table that's up for consideration. So the reservation charge and the backup service charge are highlighted in red. The reservation charge is pretty flat. It's the same amount that the customers will pay each year. The backup service charge demand is ratcheted based on the same demand as the base demand, sorry. These are the requested changes to the standby service rider. Is to include the service rider in the ordinance rate table, the ordinance electric rate table, include the TOU option for medium and large commercial cogeneration customers. The requested change would eliminate the 12-month ratcheted peak demand for standby service riders and only charge a billable monthly peak demand for the current bill period. In most cases, the customer realizes savings in their demand charges. This table represents the demand savings a cogeneration customer may realize if we eliminate the 12-month ratcheted demand and implement a monthly billable peak demand. The orange line represents the ratcheted 12-month peak demand, and the blue line represents their actual monthly demand usage. In this example, the customer had an outage in September of '22, and their peak demand hit 184 kilowatts. They will be billed the following 11 months for the one peak demand occurrence unless a higher peak demand occurs or 12 months have expired, then it would revert to the next highest peak demand. And in this case, it went down to 126 kilowatts. Under the standby service rider, the customer is already paying a monthly reservation charge to reserve and secure their system's max capacity in case of an outage. It doesn't seem reasonable to penalize these customers for a high peak demand generated by an outage or system maintenance when a customer is already paying a reservation charge to secure their max system capacity. By implementing a monthly bill demand in both the standard and TOU standby service rate structure, it will normalize the pricing reflective of their usage and provide a cost benefit. So in GWP's recommendation is to include the standby service rider in the adopted 24 and 2027 electric rates ordinance, add the TOU rate option to the standby service rider rate, eliminate the 12-month ratcheted peak demand, and implement a billable monthly peak demand. Do you have any questions?
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. This is a little technical.
Yeah, it's very technical.
Any questions from the dais? No, Councilmember Kosakian?
No.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I know, this was kind of inadvertently left out when we went through the rate setting and were catching up. And all of us have asked our questions during briefings and have struggled understanding the answers. But it looks all good to me. So I will look to see if any of my colleagues would like to introduce the ordinance. Then we would vote on it next week. Is that right?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, ordinance introduced by Councilmember Devine. Very good, thank you. Okay, before we move on to item 8C, I wanted to ask whether there are any members in the, in the audience here waiting on either of the two hearings, 9A or 9B. One is a, one has to do with vacating an easement, and the other is vacating an alley. Are anyone, any members of the public here for those items? No, okay. I was concerned about making them wait a long time. But if they're not, that's very good. So Madam Clerk, could you read item 8C into the record, please?
Action item C is City Attorney regarding review of mayoral selection policy set forth in Glendale Municipal Code Section 2.04.020. One motion to note on file report and direct staff.
Okay, well, take it to the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The council asked for a review of the mayoral selection policy that is embodied in Glendale Municipal Code Section 2.04.020. This policy was enacted by the council in 2021 via ordinance number 5963. Essentially, it provides a process by which the mayor is selected on an annual basis based on certain criteria. The first criteria being that the council member with the longest continuous uninterrupted service on the council since last serving as mayor would be, will be selected mayor, says shall be selected mayor. There's a series of tiebreakers. If there are more than, if there's more than one council member who has the same amount of longest continuous service based on the number of votes received or based on the percentage of votes received. And then there's an event that that still resists the tide, the council may select by consensus. There are some other provisions providing when the person who's next in line to be mayor shall not be selected. One of those being subsection C, being that a council member whose council term will expire in the same year that the mayor's term would expire should not be selected mayor. And then also, a council member whose council term will expire within 180 days after the date of the selection of mayor should not be selected mayor. And for the, for purposes of discussion, that was basically a codification of existing practice to not select a mayor who was up for reelection for their council seat. And given that our council dates, our election dates have changed, it was to cover both scenarios. Subsection D has a provision which says council member who served as mayor shall not, who's currently serving as mayor, should not be selected mayor unless all the other council members decline to serve. There's an exception for council member who's unwilling or unable to serve. There's an exception for, the last, there's a couple other exceptions that apply to when there's a vacancy. And basically says this selection process doesn't apply. Council can select who they want. And then that council member would have the opportunity to be the mayor when there's actually a full term coming up. And then there's an exception, sort of a catch-all exception that's provided. And that's the subject of the subsequent agenda item, providing that, notwithstanding the provisions of the section, that in the event the council decides in its discretion that it's in the best interest of the city not to appoint the council member who's next in line to serve as mayor under the process that I just described, then the council may appoint the next qualified council member under the process set forth in the code. So those are the provisions that are part of the selection process. The council asked for a review of this process. I would note, as we mentioned when this was, the council was discussing whether to agendize this, whatever happens on this item and the next item would not apply to the next mayoral selection, which is scheduled for next week due to the time that it would take to prepare, draft, enact, and have effective an ordinance to change this policy. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the policy and hear your discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Kosakian, do you want to kick it off?
Sure, I'll kick it off. And again, I apologize for not actually being in chambers today with you. I had every intent to be there, and unfortunately, I cannot. I didn't want to get anyone sick, and I'm not feeling 100%. But let me first off say that the reason why we have this ordinance in place and why we have this particular approach versus what was done before is because previous councils had decided to politicize and make the process be one that was prone to horse trading. It was prone to backroom dealmaking. It was prone to people having discussions where colleagues were skipped over for the mayorship. And when people were left out of the mayorship or the opportunity to serve as mayor, it did not engender goodwill or the culture that we need on council to get things done for this city. As such, we had this item considered at my behest. We came up with a process. And over time, it has become clear that that process is an imperfect one because it allowed for a loophole and an unforeseen situation where someone would be skipped over and not be allowed to serve as mayor in their term, first term in office or their initial term in a four-year period. If they hadn't served as mayor, that would mean that they would never get to serve as mayor potentially, deferring to individuals who had that, who had that opportunity previously. So it is my desire to amend this ordinance to make it clear that in a situation where someone is faced with the possibility of not serving as mayor. someone is faced with the possibility of not serving as mayor, for that person to take precedence over someone who has had that opportunity. So I think it's a fair and a right thing to do. I think that if, you know, schoolchildren can understand the basic, simple fairness and decency issue of taking turns and allowing everyone a turn, then certainly we as council members can. And so it is my wish and desire to make sure that we have this process amended and take such action to allow for one of our colleagues who would otherwise not get to serve as mayor to the opportunity to serve as mayor. And by the way, that was the initial intent of this because there was concerns that other people would be skipped over after years of service. So we did not want to have that repeated. If we maintain the course that we're on right now, we will actually have, I think, worked against the intent of this policy that I worked so hard to bring forward and that was passed with the support of my colleagues. So I am asking for my colleagues to reconsider our initial decisions to do the right thing now when we have the opportunity to. I am sure that we're going to hear from the public because I've already heard from a few select individuals and some very vociferous ones, but again, it's never the wrong time to do the right thing and I'm asking my fellow council members to join me in doing that in the spirit of congeniality and working together and making sure that no one of us, if ever in the same situation or any future council members in a similar situation, are passed over. And I do believe that's in the best interest of the city.
Okay, so as far as process goes, could you maybe just reiterate? So Councilmember Kasakian has, you know, is asking us to reconsider because we have to talk about different formulas that we would apply.
Sure.
He's alluding to one, but how would we, I know it can be very messy to try to get a formula that's going to give you the outcome you want, and I think that's why we're where we are now. How would you suggest we proceed with this?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As you note, I think there are some unintended consequences, unintended consequences and also unintended scenarios that we sometimes can't, we tried our very best to try to figure out how this would kind of play out over time, but I think, you know, the best idea is after you've heard public comment and after you've had discussion on kind of where you are on concepts, if you have specific ideas, direct us on those, but if you have a sort of a concept that we want to make sure that every council member has a chance to serve as mayor during their term, see what exceptions we can apply and go do that. But we'll take as much specific direction as the council wants to give us. We would probably need to go back, my team, city manager's team, innovation folks, and figure out what is the best language that will implement whatever vision or direction that the council wants to provide. So if the idea is you want to make, you want to apply the current policy, but make sure have an exception that it won't apply if it would provide that one council member would be skipped over during his or her term, then we will go back and try to write that. That's difficult, but we will try to go our best to go back and put that together.
You would put something together, bring it back to us in maybe a few weeks, a month? I mean, typically, I know these things don't happen overnight.
Right. We would sit down, try to figure out the timetable, we'd try to bring it back as soon as possible, knowing though that, again, next week's item, we'll move forward without it, but we will.
I would like to request that it come back as soon as possible and by next week.
Okay, so could you speak to that because is that possible to do?
Well, I don't know. It depends on what direction you give us, number one. Number two, again, we could bring it back, but that won't have, that won't be an ordinance that will be adopted if you want it has a guiding policy for your decision next week or a factor that you consider next week, I guess. But again, right now, the guiding policy is what's in the municipal code and you'll either have to select the person that's next in line or make a finding that it's not in the best interest to select that individual. So those are your two options next week. So I'm not sure that bringing it back next week will provide any additional guidance for you, but you're the council, you direct us, we'll do our best to bring it back next week.
Even if you brought an ordinance back next week, it would still need to be introduced and then voted on in the next meeting.
Right, which is not till April 16th.
Until it's in effect. Okay, so.
That's correct.
Just want everybody to understand that's what we're talking about here. That's the process. But let's hear, should I go to the speakers or, if you want to? Okay, okay. I will do that. So we have, how many callers do we have?
We have four callers.
Okay, we have 11 cards, four callers. I'm going to give everybody two minutes. About five minutes in, we will no longer take additional phone calls. That, okay? All right? We'll start with Karen Kwak.
Yeah, it just shows right now. Hi, I'm Karen Kwak. I've heard a lot about supporting women in this chamber and is particularly on this topic. That's great. If you would please show slide number one. No, actually, that's slide two. Can you go to slide one? Okay, here's a woman I supported, Laura Friedman. That council member Divine also supported Laura Friedman for Congress, but the other four council members supported one of her opponents, Anthony Porcentino. Now, consider how remarkable it is that four out of five council members can agree. We can also have Mr. Brotman agree with Mr. Najarian, and you can all still be completely out of touch with the world outside your window by a factor of more than two to one. Okay, next slide, please. Here's another woman I supported, Neta Fareed, running for school board in my district. Once again, there was one council member who endorsed her, that was Mr. Brotman. The other four council members did not endorse her. So you know, you're all free to support whoever you want, male or female, doesn't matter to me, but when you come back and use the argument that we need to uplift women in order to uplift only some women and not others, that sounds just a little hypocritical. Okay, point number two, what is fair? It's a very easy test of what is fair, it's just flip it. For example, if Councilmember Asatrian were the council member who had duly gone through all the steps, you know, served as vice chair of the Housing Authority, then chair of the Housing Authority, and just on the eve of becoming mayor, that you wanted to snatch it away from her, give it to someone else, there would be a lot of voices calling out unfair. That's a very easy test you can apply to anyone. Okay, as I see it, the main problem is that sometimes our municipal elections are held in March, sometimes they're held in June. That means that council members elected in June do not get a fair shot at deciding who gets to be mayor, chair of the Housing Authority, and vice chair in April. If you all can correct this amendment, correct this going forward and amend it, that would make the ordinance more fair and by all means do that, but it is way too late to do that for the decision you're going to make next week. Okay, also, that the most baffling part of this process was that even once Councilmember Asatrian understood the process, that she actually declined to take her seat as vice chair of the Housing Authority around this time last year. That was completely baffling to me. But be of good cheer that if we get council districts and elected mayor, all of this might become irrelevant anyway. Thank you. Good night.
Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. Well, let's see, if it should be women, how about people who are over 80 years of age? They should be next in line. I demand it. Number two, Ms. Ellen Asatrian, you're on council for seven weeks and you're already going to be running for the state assembly, and now you want to make sure you're going to be a mayor of this time? Why don't you just wait your turn? Now, I don't love Councilman Ara Najarian, but I believe he's next in line according to where the system is working right now. We're going to make any changes, make it effective starting in April. And going forward, you can make all the changes you want, even you can make a change. But don't, it's an expression, you don't change horses in midstream. And that's where we are tonight, midstream. Councilwoman Artie Kasakian, you know what's right. Why are you playing this game? You know, you used to be a conservative Democrat and now you swung to the left. Why don't you be a conservative Democrat and support Mr. Ara Najarian? Again, he's not my favorite councilperson. We've gone back and forth many times, and I'm sure if he's councilman next time, trust me, we'll have our turn too. But why don't you just wait your turn? It's not about being a woman. Remember, you couldn't define what a woman was when you were in the council candidate form. You said, "I can't define a woman," and here you are, you want to say, "I'm a woman now." Wow. Now, are you a man, woman, man? Should I call you a woman?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, this discussion is about the policy, not who's going to serve as mayor.
So we're going to policy? Okay, so let's keep it straight. We don't need to change horses in midstream. And you'll get your turn, Councilwoman Asatrian. Thank you.
Tony Passarella.
Tony Passarella, 37-year resident of the city of Glendale. This is all about Ellen, isn't it? Who is the real Ellen Asatrian? Is she for the people or is she for the developers? Well, I don't know how many people know this, but Ellen took thousands of dollars and she abandoned the voters that voted her in on council, she was wanting to abandon them and run for assembly. Well, she took thousands of dollars from developers and the Katson owners, supporting her assembly run, her failed assembly run. Well, is she for the people?
Speak to the policy, please, not to individual council members. This is not what we're discussing.
I'm getting there.
We'll get there quickly.
I'm getting there. Is she for the people? No. In an ordinance, a noise ordinance, she wants to go seven days a week till 2:00 in the morning. Is that for the people or is that for egotistical Ellen? Okay, I'll cut it short here. No for mayor on Ellen and yes for mayor on Mr. Najarian.
Again, let me be clear, this is not about who is going to be our next mayor. This is about our policy for selecting mayors going forward. As you heard from the city attorney, nothing we decide tonight will apply to next week's rotation. Okay? So we will hear from Ray Shelton, two minutes.
Free speech requires that speakers be allowed to say what they want. That is a constitutional right established in the California Constitution. This proposal tonight is nothing more than an attempted assassination hit on Ara Najarian. Hot on the heels of the East Area Democratic stolen victories at the Glendale Unified School District, several city council members, including Artie, Brotman, Ellen, are all seeking to consolidate the political power by changing the rules in how a mayor is chosen. Talina Sidian and Alicia Harris, a woman who is not a resident of Glendale, have already begun a behind-the-scenes smear campaign against Ara Najarian. All of you receive their emails, which will be made public. Don't act like you don't have them. I do. This is a plot to elevate Ellen because she is their political ally. She is a transgender activist and she supports all of the evil actions of the East Area Fascist Democratic Socialist Party. You can smile, you can smirk.
I will.
But it only shows your own true inner self. In the last few seconds, I have one thing to say to the city clerk. My name is Ray Shelton and I am a legally registered member of the Wintune Tribe in Northern California. City clerk, you do not speak for indigenous peoples.
You're not on topic, please.
Free speech, we can say whatever we want on topic or off topic.
Please let's close him off.
Yes, we can.
No, you cannot. You have to speak on the topic.
Yes, we can. Talk to your lawyer over there.
Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, you're right. It's a specific agenda item to talk about.
You can only talk about the specific agenda item, so.
Power lust?
Next speaker, Denise Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, city council, and city staff. In my previous comments, I asked council to consider the language in this ordinance and match it to your intent. Council comments indicated that the language was written to take out politics and to ensure a fair selection process. And yet, the language as written gives precedence to the most senior members on council, senior members that I have admired for many years, by the way. But my comments are not about anyone in particular, they are about a fair and equitable rotation for all council members and for those who have never served. It's also about the language being confusing, which I have maintained all along. And the only part of the language that you can really rule on, which you could actually do in the loophole, is to vote by majority. I remind again that we as residents elect all council as equal members to serve our city and not focus on hierarchy or titles. And it also introduces, perhaps unintended, and I know that this is unintended, but it does introduce gender politics. In 100 years, we've only had seven women serve on council and two of those women would be overlooked for mayor. Council indicated that the vote was unanimous, but we have seen councils switch their vote on the same information only years later, specifically about historic sites. Currently, council wants to consider some of the language be removed, and so therefore, when you look at policy and you remove some of the language, you open it up for discussion on all of the language. I would also suggest that because of these suggested changes in the current deliberation, the easiest possible way forward on this language so that the city can get on with the business of the city and our new council members is to vote by majority. For these reasons, I urge you to consider option number three. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Joy McCreary.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Joy McCreary and I'm a resident of Glendale and a member of the National Women's Political Caucus. I'm here today to speak on this agenda item and the mayoral succession policy specifically. I'm here to ask you to repeal the current policy and put in place a more equitable one as it gives every council member the opportunity to serve as mayor during each of their four-year term. The mayorship is not merely a symbolic position. It gives every council member a year to serve as a spokesperson for the city, set agendas, represent Glendale on different outside bodies, including regional and city leagues, Glendale Unified School Board, and GCC's trustee board, as well as communicate with our sister cities, among other important duties and responsibilities. Every current sitting council member, with the exception of Councilmember Asatrian, has had the opportunity to serve as mayor during their first four-year term. It would be remiss of me not to bring up that it is National Women's Month and as the policy stands, the first immigrant woman, the first Armenian woman, and the youngest woman to be elected to the council would be prevented from representing us as mayor. As a young woman myself, I would look forward to seeing a woman be a mayor. I ask the council tonight to utilize their policymaking power and amend the mayoral succession policy to be more inclusive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. There's no N on here. Yasaya?
Yasayan.
I know, I know you're Yasayan, you left the N off.
Oh, okay. Thank you for noticing. Sorry.
But I know you, so I know you're Yasayan.
So, good evening, Mayor Brotman and city council members. My name is Catherine Yasayan and I'm a 45-years resident of Glendale. Today, I'm here to speak on the agenda of choosing a mayor. And I think excluding newer council members from assuming the role of mayor and denying it is not right. The chance to members of council in their first term, it's like taking away the representation of diverse voices. This issue touches the fundamental questions of fairness and send a message to aspiring leaders, especially to women and minorities. I hope you will amend the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily Bickmazian.
I was going to say something that I had written down, but honestly, I think I'm just going to speak from my heart. I'm a single mother raising two teenage daughters in the city of Glendale. You know, when Councilmember Asatrian was running for her You know, when Councilmember Asatryan was running for her seat on the council, we were very proud. There is something about a female representing a certain demographic in the city. Yes, everybody has their right to run. Everybody has a right to represent the certain demographic that they're leading, essentially. I took my children. We went to the campaigns. We went to the meetings. We went to the meeting greets, and I showed them, and I talked to them. They were very excited. And they knew that soon enough, it was going to be her turn to be mayor, and she was going to be their voice. She was going to be their leader. She was going to be setting precedent for them to look forward to. We are trying to get the youth involved every single year in politics, in their community. Excuse me. In their community. And having everybody take their turn, like Councilmember Kasakian said, simple, basic rules of preschool. Everybody gets a turn. Let's play fair. Let's have every single council member, you know, Councilmember Najarian, you did it four times, right? Great, that's wonderful. Why not give somebody else the turn to set a new precedent? Something to look forward to, something to show, something for the youth to look forward to. Now, here's the thing. My daughters, for example, not to say there's anything wrong with you and what you did in your four chances of being mayor, but my daughters are going to be able to relate better to Councilmember Asatryan. This isn't about a male or a female issue. This is about...
Oh, yeah.
Wow. The circus isn't down. Okay, so here's the thing. Honestly, they, and I can only speak for my children, they were very much looking forward to this. They deserve a voice. They deserve someone to look up to, someone to relate to. So everybody should get their turn.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Alec, I guess that's Alec Bartroshev. Okay.
Alec Bartroshev, I just wanted to express my support essentially for the comments and the thrust of what Councilmember Kasakian had brought forward. I think the comments that Denise Miller had made were on point about making sure that this process is made fair. I think there's something to be said about essentially the outcome of the policy decision that was made in the past, where the consequences that a council member may not be able to become mayor in his or her first term. I think that it's on us to make it better, to make it fair. And to simply not do anything is also saying something, and I want to make sure that you're aware that people are watching if you choose to not take action on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Kusconian.
Thank you, Mayor Brotman, council members. First off, I'd like to say God bless Glendale. I love attending these meetings and listening to the meetings because it showcases the rich representation of our community, spirit of our city. As a resident, I want to highlight the importance of our rotational representation policy, which ensures that every council member gets a chance to serve as mayor. This practice is essential for fair and balanced governance showcasing Glendale's commitment to democracy and inclusiveness. It enables us to hear diverse voices and strengthens the leadership for our city. Known for its dynamic and forward-looking approach, maintaining this tradition is crucial for the integrity and effectiveness of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ani Gregorian.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name's Ani, 33-year Glendale resident. I'm here to speak about your plans to change rules in order to satisfy your political needs. Mr. Kasakian, a few years ago, when it was politically necessary for you, you pushed the rule that was designed to eliminate politics from how our mayor is chosen. It's working fine. The municipal code says that the mayor shall be selected starting with the member with the longest continuous service on the council since last serving as mayor. This rule was created with a unanimous vote of five to zero. But now you want to change the rule. Why? Because it will allow Ms. Ellen Asatryan a participation prize after having been soundly defeated in her assembly race, right? She couldn't wait to leave our city in order to climb the political ladder, only a year into her council term. She announced she wanted to go on to something bigger. You shouldn't be changing laws in order to feed the political narcissism of a council member. Keep the rule as it is. You are trying to turn the city into dictatorship by pushing out people with differing views. Do not change this rule. It's already been changed.
Okay, Ramela Irragi.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Yeah, actually, I don't understand what all this fuzzy is all about. For me, as a attendee of the council meeting for two years, I still don't know what are the differences, I mean, the difference between mayor and other council member. They all have the same vote, I mean, equal votes. And the only thing that I see here, as a mayor who sits on that mayor's seat, is just changing rules, stupid rules, like taking the oral communication from the top of the hour of this meeting to the end of this meeting. So, and since I, once I talked to attorney, Ms. Attorney, that exactly what are the responsibility of mayor? And, and they, yeah, I said, it's more ceremonial. So that means it's not a big deal being a mayor of this city. Yeah, if it's a big city like New York or Los Angeles, yeah, it's a big deal. But for this city, I still don't know. Mayors on this city are like dime a dozen. Thank you.
Susan Brusalian.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and staff. I'm speaking here tonight as a 35-year resident of the city of Glendale. At a city council meeting in January 2021, the city council members created and implemented an exception to the rule at hand with urgency, and ultimately developed a fair procedure to elect the mayor to keep politics out of the selection process and eliminating the possibility of collusion and self-serving dealings. At the time, it was council members Brotman, Najarian, Kasakian, Divine, and Agujanian who've all voted for this amendment, and it passed five to zero. There was a reason for that. Now, a decision to revert the rules that were put in place in good faith three years ago is on the agenda to be changed again. Amending the municipal code from what it is today will reflect recklessness and haste amongst council members and allow for politics to come back into the picture. Lately, the residents of Glendale have observed city council members flip-flopping on several very important decisions, decisions that took many long hours of deliberation. This city council is losing credibility with its residents. Amending the rules again to accommodate council members' needs for different reasons is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to the speakers. I'm sorry, to the callers.
Our first caller is Angela G. Angela, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I want to second the comments made by Ms. McCreary and Ms. Yasayan and others who spoke tonight, and add that speaking as a parent of a child in GUSD, until we're able to elect our mayor democratically, I support the city council in modifying policy that allows the selection of a mayor willing to work for and support all members of our community. Our Ara Najarian in his term on council has advanced false and harmful narratives about our schools, teachers, and LGBTQ+ community. After a year marked by chaos, violence, and fear for LGBTQ+ families, Glendale deserves a mayor who will fearlessly stand up for all its citizens. Mr. Najarian has shown himself to be aligned with bigoted groups and has misrepresented our community by advancing harmful misinformation on a far-right propaganda channel. Our community's values are clear in our recent school board election, rejecting the candidacy of two individuals...
Can we stop the clock? Mr. Mohill, please. Stop. Mayor Potem Asatryan, so again, the topic is whether to change the process. I know, obviously, the council members who are being considered, or the council members being considered, that is an issue, but the focus should be on the policy itself.
Okay. How many minutes does the caller have left?
The caller has a minute and six seconds.
Okay. If, they can continue as long as they stay on topic.
Thank you. Thank you. As I was saying, until we have the ability to elect our mayor democratically, changes to the policy which prevents someone who has advanced harmful narratives against our community from representing our community as mayor, those changes are necessary. We've rejected the candidacy of individuals who advance anti-LGBTQ beliefs, and we deserve a mayor and city council who will represent all of us.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you need to be on topic. We need to stop.
We're going to go to the next caller. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Elizabeth Vitonza. Elizabeth, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Wonderful, thank you. Yes, I'm just calling to voice my approval of the plan to revisit the ordinance and to amend it. Three years is plenty of time to see if the original ordinance is working or not. Clearly, it's not, and that we need to have the opportunity as a city, as a city council, you should be able to make sure that the person who is the mayor is the person who is next in line, the person who may have not had the opportunity yet, and the person who can best serve the interests of all of the people in this very diverse city. So yes, I fully support Councilmember Kasakian's move to make sure that the next person selected to be mayor fulfills the spirit of the order. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Karen Costa. Karen, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members, for taking my call. I want to say, number one, I am very much in favor of having a rotation of mayors. I think the fact that a female could be next in line is extremely important to us. For those that are attacking the city council members for anything is completely out of line. I respect every single one of you, and especially the people that have stuck up for us in the Rancho. I'm a 47-year resident of the Rancho, and I 100% support the rotation of mayors, not based on how long they have served. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next caller is Armik Shirin Yan. Armik, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, everybody. And I just have a short, brief comment in regards to today's agenda. I mean, basically, my comment is the current policy should be changed. It was three years. It hasn't really helped the community. I think what we should do is people who are elected, we elected them, and we want them to serve their terms accordingly. So that's basically all I have to say is I think it's only fair that the rotation should continue, it should be implemented, and it should go forward according to the rule. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next and final caller is Anahit Sarkisian. Anahit, you're on air. You have two minutes.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council members, for having me. I just wanted to also add my brief comment to recenter the focus, refocus the discussion on the topic, and that is what kind of functionality we expect for this body. And from the beginning, from the election a few years ago, if people voted knowing, and that I'm sure is not dotted, that's the expectation of the community when they went to elections, that the rotation is going to happen. I think it's only fair and only just to just follow what people were thinking when they went to vote and continue that policy. I think it will only make sure that each elected member gets their deserved chance and is able to really represent the city in their own way, because again, that gets a very diverse community, and every single pocket of the community deserves a fair representation and fair voice to be a channel and outlet for them. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, all of our commenters and callers, where do we go from here? Want to give us any guidance?
At this point, it really is for council discussion, some deliberation, and perhaps give us some direction on where you'd like to see the change. Because I know it's generally to try to, you know, some, I'll defer to Councilmember Kasakian.
I think that we're overcomplicating the issue. It's very simple. You know, we had a rule in place to ensure that no one would get skipped over the mayorship, and the adoption of that rule is now going to result in at least one member getting skipped over. So...
My own comment to that, if I could speak to that, council member and Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There's probably a different way, that is the issue, I agree, but there are probably different ways to address it, depending on how the council feels about it. That's my own comment.
Yeah, that's what I would like to hear, a little bit more of a discussion of how we, I mean, we may have different opinions about whether this is, whether our existing ordinance is fair or not, but how do we actually change it if that's what we want to do? But, Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, I have a lot...
So, I was getting to that.
Oh, okay, well, let's hear from Councilmember Najarian, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Kasakian.
So I have a lot to say, and probably no one has seen the mayoral selection process as many times as I have. I remember a process in 2008 when I supported Bob Euseffion. Bob Euseffion supported Bob Euseffion. Weaver and Quintero wanted me to be mayor. John Draymond said, "You take your little red wagon and run away." So we were tied two to two, with me supporting another councilman, two other council members supporting me. What kind of screwy, screwy system is that? And every year, when it comes time to be mayor, there's backdoor dealings, there's horse trading, there's promises, there's backscratching, quid pro quo like you've never seen before. I don't want to tell you what happened to Laura Friedman, because if I told you what happened to Laura Friedman, two of my colleagues on the council right now would be very embarrassed as to what happened. Well, since you insist. It was 2016, and this is burned in my memory because it was the absolute most shameful decision I ever made as a council member. In 2016, there was an assembly race between our clerk, Artie Kasakian, and then council member Laura Friedman. Laura Friedman was next in line, a woman. Where are you women, you know, supporters? Laura Friedman was next in line. Supporters of Kasakian, and I didn't say Kasakian, supporters of Kasakian and members of the ANC came to me and said, "There's no way you're going to vote Laura Friedman in to be mayor," because they didn't want Laura Friedman to be running as mayor against Kasakian as city clerk. And the threat was, "If you don't do what we ask you to do, we're not going to support you." At that time, I'd been on council 11 years, and I was running for supervisor. Now, who was head of the ANC at that time? Look it up, folks. Ellen Asaturian. And it was the most haunting decision I ever made, because that's skipping over someone who's next in line to be mayor. And that's why, we ended up with a good mayor. We went to Paula Divine, but that's not the, Mr. Mohill, please, please. The point is, it was a nightmare. Ask Laura Friedman. If you don't believe me, folks, you ask Laura Friedman, you ask Paula Divine. It was a terrible, terrible moment. To this day, the worst decision I ever made. So I was so relieved when Mr. Kasakian, in 2021, said, "Let's have a predictable, reliable method of selecting the mayor." And it wasn't just one meeting, it wasn't just two meetings, we discussed it for three meetings. Can we have clip number one, please? And you have to, I'm playing these because you have to see that council, with sober deliberation... And you have to, I'm playing these because you have to see the council with sober deliberation, with full realization that there might be a time in four years that someone will not be mayor, voted unanimously. Volume?
Including myself. I welcome, right now, having been on council for seven years and having been through the selection of many mayors, including myself, I welcome this discussion. I say that many of the elections have been contentious and have resulted in hard feelings, in tension, and in animosity. At this point, I see a need, based on my experience, for predictability and objectivity in our criteria for our consensus process. I feel that at this time, at the time of appointment, the next mayor should know who they are, and the council should know who they are, and there should be no surprises and no guesses. So therefore, a process has to be in place in which the consensus of the council is based on objective criteria. I would support, for the selection of mayor, alternative number two in the staff report with the following combination of selection procedures. First, the primary procedure would be seniority of uninterrupted service. Secondary procedure, in the event of a tie or whatever, would be the highest collective votes. And then tertiary, for confirmation and ratification, would be council consensus, of course. I would support maintaining the requirement that a councilmember cannot be selected mayor if they are up for election during their mayor term to any other elected office, be it local or state or federal, and I think that we should codify the formalized selection process, so it is the one that we use and that we go by. And asking staff to provide council with suggestions and/or options for creating an ascension process that includes, you know, the chair of housing authority ascending as mayor, that's kind of been the way we've worked it, and I say that this would add a level...
Number two, please.
Put a little more predictability into it than we would say...
Number one. Number two, it should be Dan Brotman.
Yeah, so I agree that taking the horse trading out of it is good, so I support, you know, having this predictable process, that's number one. Most of the things that Councilmember Devine listed, I agree with. I like the idea of the seniority methodology, and, you know, tiebreaker with total number of votes is fine. And I also like this idea that, you know, before the person is mayor, they're chair of the housing authority and the vice chair of the housing authority, or is that what it's called, vice chair or alternate chair? Is kind of the one behind, and ascends to be chair of the housing authority the next year and then mayor the following year. The only issue I have with changing the dates and making it not just a simple 12-month thing is, remember our election...
Number three, please.
Put a little more predictability into it than we would say the ascension process of the housing, director of housing is in line.
Right, but I'll second that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Kasakian.
Next, please.
Somebody will regret it.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Well, since you rolled 33 votes on it, I'll just go ahead and vote for it.
That was a wise ass back there, too. Next, please. That was the first meeting where we gave motion, and it came to us again, six weeks later.
And serve out a term without being mayor and have to get reelected before they can become mayor, and that's, I think that's acceptable, it probably won't happen very often, as Mr. Garcia says. So I'm fine with how we have it structured now.
On that note, there was a...
Next one, please. Are we up to five or six? So Dan was talking about the four years, someone might not be in it in four years.
I was going to say, when we reference Marianne Plumley and her situation, if that was the case, that I didn't know that she ever wanted to be mayor, I didn't know the situation. But since you're saying that she was bitter, I think that's exactly the situation we're trying to avoid, that anyone is bitter because they were not, they were passed over, politics got involved, backdoor agreements were coming into play, and having a cut-and-dry procedure and ordinance that spelled it all out, I think, is the way to prevent that from happening.
Seven, please.
So I'm in favor of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Your support. Yeah, I just want to say, when we reference Marianne Plumley and her situation, if that was the case, that I didn't know that she ever wanted to be mayor, I didn't know the situation. But since you're saying that she was bitter, I think that's exactly the situation we're trying to avoid.
Let's go to eight, please.
That anyone is bitter because they were not, they were passed...
Eight, please.
A comment on this, Councilmember Kasakian.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think that, you know, this is the best process we're going to have right now. I think it's the most equitable one, and I think it's going to take some of the unpredictability out of the process that we've seen in previous years out of the selection of the mayor. It will make it, I think, as I said, as fair as it can be. Now, as far as the other issues that were raised by the callers, I think there will be a time to address all of those, but for the time being, I think this will work well. And with that, I would like to make the motion for adoption.
Is there any other comment?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, is there any other comment? Anybody?
Next one, please. That's the last one.
So I just wanted to be mentioning it, so with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Next caller, next item.
So, folks, you saw the council talked about this for three different meetings. Mr. Brotman, Mr. Brotman's clip highlights the fact that we realize that there could be an up and time when someone elected may not get his or her chance into council. I don't know how you can change the law that's going to flip and give other people a chance to come in. I will, however, in the spirit of compromise, I will consider that we eliminate the requirement, the exclusion, that you cannot run for mayor, excuse me, that you cannot be mayor when you're running for reelection. I think that part of the law is something I'm willing to discuss, I'm willing to discuss that, but it's an ugly process right now when we try and go back to the horse trading, because you can't say we're skipping over anyone. Skipping over implies that there's a law in place, and you're not applying that law to that person. That's not what's occurring. We are following the rules, the best rules that we could come up with at that time, seniority, votes, and then in the event of a tie between those two, then council can get involved and make their decision. We can't go back to where we were before. Whether we have districts in next year, or two years, or an elected mayor, we can't now go back to the free-for-all, the unfairness, the bitterness. I mean, how many people feel bitter in this room? Let's be honest, right? I think both sides feel bitter, and there's hundreds, if not thousands, of other people out there in the city that feel bitter because we're trying to deviate from this process. That's not what we're here to do. So I would insist that we stick with the current seniority criteria that we, like I said, I'm willing to discuss that other thing about being mayor and running. The problem is, everyone's going to want to be mayor when they run for reelection. Everyone will take a pass. "Oh, I pass so I can be mayor next year when I'm running for reelection." That's going to be hard to administer. I don't know how we can find a way out of that, but those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, this is, this is a tough one, I have to say, but first of all, I don't feel that this is a gender issue. It's not about being a woman or being a man, it's the best person for the job. And the comment that was made, "Well, why didn't I, why didn't I support every woman?" and that's not very, that's disingenuous. I do support all women, but on special, elected, or administrative jobs that require experience or certain attributes, I don't support any woman. It has to be the right woman when I support her. But as far as those that are vulnerable, I support every single one, and people in this community know that. As far as Marianne Plumley goes, I did research, she refused the position of mayor, she sat down with her husband, as I understand it, they talked it over, and she decided that she was not qualified. I don't know why. She wasn't an engineer, I don't know, but that was what I was told. So that still remains, I guess, a mystery. I went through the situation that Councilmember Najarian was talking about. That was a horrendous situation. Yes, it was embarrassing for everybody concerned. It is an experience that I don't ever want any other person to have to go through. There was politics in play, there was personal issues in play, and that was why I was so adamant in those tapes that you showed, to get an ordinance in place that would make the mayorship predictable. Now, when I was mayor the second time, this ordinance was in place, and it was a smooth transition, I was housing authority, and the reason we do housing authority, I think, is to give people, those elected officials, experience at running meetings. A lot of times, an elected official will come in on the council and never have run a meeting before, and so being chair of housing gives them that opportunity to learn the process. And so I still think that is the way to go, that the housing chair should then become the mayor. But I think it has to be predictable. If it's not predictable, y'all, it becomes ugly. I've been through it, others have been through it. It leads to hard feelings, it leads to a dysfunctional council, you get division, and it's just not good for the council, and it's not good for our residents. And I think what we have to do is the best for our community. Clearly, and I hear these people say, "This isn't working." Clearly, it is working. It has worked now for three years. The transition to the mayorship has been very smooth, no hard feelings, no anger. Everyone knows, has known who is going to be the next mayor, and it was very easy. And as far as being passed over, I thought about that, and, you know, if you're not able to be mayor in your first term, you will definitely be mayor in your second term, and that's a choice that you make. Somebody said, "Well, you know, if she doesn't run for reelection," or if somebody doesn't run for reelection, well, that's the choice of that person, whether they want to run again or not. And then the other, the other alternative is that, I don't know, Councilmember Kasakian could say, "I'm going to pass in favor of Councilmember Asaturian. I'll give up my mayorship for her." Or Councilmember Brotman could say, "Councilmember Devine, I'm going to give up my mayorship for you, because you haven't, you know, you've only been twice," or something. So there are alternatives to this ordinance. However, saying, oh, and the other thing is, this, "For the best of the city," what does that mean?
We're going to get to that.
What does that mean? Okay, I know, I know, okay, but what does that mean? All right. So what I guess I'm saying, City Attorney and everyone else that's listening, is the fact that I think this is a good ordinance, I think it's been working, I would like to see it stay in effect. If there is a majority that feels that maybe we could tweak it a little bit, maybe, you know, I could probably be persuaded. But for now, I am, I am in favor of maintaining this ordinance and following the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Asaturian?
Sure. A lot of accusations that have been made here tonight. You grabbing it for your Instagram account? Let me tell you, I've grown up in this city, I've been the daughter of this community, and I have stayed up until 5:00 in the morning at every one of his elections to support Councilmember Ara Najarian. 2005, his first race, Pacific and Stalker, I was there until 4:00 in the morning. When he ran for supervisor, I was there for him. So don't try to turn this into Councilmember Najarian versus Councilmember Asaturian. Let me start there. For all the accusations that have been made about me to try to tarnish my reputation on your little accounts, my track record speaks for itself, and I'm happy to sit down and walk through that track record. What I won't tolerate, Mr. Mike Mohl, you have the right to come up to this dais all you want and give your free speech, I don't have to sit here and listen to it. Your comments are vile, they're disrespectful, and I know that when I take up this seat, I'm serving as an example to women and girls in this community. And what that means, if I sit here silently, over and over again, and not say anything, what I'm teaching them is for them to be quiet. So no, moving forward, I'm not going to be quiet. I have been sitting on this dais for the last year and a half. I have had colleagues raise their hand at me when I'm speaking to tell me to be quiet. I have had situations where my experience, my experience has been questioned. I think one of my colleagues brought that up again today, that we need somebody with experience. Well, let me tell you about my experience. I have served on Parks and Recreation as the chair. I asked for this policy to be brought up a year and a half ago, and when the housing authority item came up, I asked specifically, again, to serve on that. For me, this issue with giving somebody that has served as mayor is simply unfair. Your first point in this ordinance, I feel like, is flawed. I was not here to vote for it at the time. Just because somebody has served as mayor before does not mean that they get to supersede over somebody that has not. I did the same thing, and I said the same thing during our boards and commissions meetings, that we were talking about modifying just last meeting. So for me, this isn't about, I'm here today, we all have three terms to serve, this isn't about me. For me, when you're making policy, you're defining the future of your city, and I always come from a place of fairness, and I simply don't think that this policy as written is fair. So there's a couple of things I would love. I think when Councilmember Kasakian brought up just making it such that every council member gets to serve, I think that that needs to be the premise of this ordinance. I'm not looking to get rid of it, I don't want the backdoor politics, and I will have to say, Councilmember Najarian, there have been a lot of lies, a lot of lies that have been on Instagram, tarnishing my reputation, that have resulted in... that have been on Instagram, tarnishing my reputation, that have resulted in rape threats and death threats to me and my family. And I hear some of that today. But I never, but I never, never expected that in the way you phrased the sentence, because you didn't say it specifically, you made it sound like you and I had the conversation, and I told you to vote for Arti and threatened you? Have I ever threatened you? Exactly. So let me, let me, let me just make-
Not to vote for Arti, we were voting for Paula. Well, you're asking me a question.
No. You specifically, in the way that you phrased it, guess who was the head of the ANC then? Yes, Alan Asatrian. You and I have never had that conversation, Aron Najarian. You and I have not had that conversation. But guess what? They're going to post that tomorrow, and you know what they're not going to post? They're not going to post this part. They're going to post your part. And truth be told, you and I have never had that conversation. So when we talk about experience, when we talk about what was and wasn't, I'm looking for a fair system. I'm looking for us to create a system where this actually does not have to take place, and that does not have to take place. I said it during our last meeting, it's way past time for us as council members to come together to unite our communities instead of continuing to divide.
I have proposed a modification which may-
You know, he keeps interrupting the meeting, Mayor. I, I'm not going to tolerate it. If you're-
Yeah. We, I think he needs to leave. He needs to leave. It's too much. It's been three or four times. I know.
It's every week. This is ridiculous.
Yeah. Yes.
It's a waste of time. Everyone's time. A waste of everyone's time.
Okay, please. No, please, please. I don't want to hear you do the same thing, because I'll have to ask you to be removed also. We will have decorum in this council chamber. Anybody else that interrupts, disrupts, yells from the audience will also be asked to leave. Okay? Let's continue. Councilmember Najarian?
I'm not sure where I left it, but I do understand the points that my colleague, Ms. Asatrian, is making. I'm hoping that we can make a modification to the seniority rule, which may result in greater equity to a council member who is elected and through the rotation system, not able to serve as mayor in the four-year term. I'm happy to discuss that. You know, staff has to do their work about that. Does being mayor when you run for election give you that much of a boost? Hmm, I don't know. I mean, I used to think it did. Now, I'm not so sure. But I don't want that belief to be an obstacle that would otherwise solve this problem, keeping the seniority rule in place. That's what's screwing us up. Otherwise, Ms. Asatrian would be mayor next time. The person or candidate would have that opportunity. So it's that part of this law that's causing the immediate problem that we're facing.
Okay. Before, Councilmember Kusakian, I want to go back to you for maybe a little bit more specificity. But just to say my piece, since everybody else has, when we introduced this ordinance three years ago, was it? It's true that we knew, I knew, that there could be an instance where somebody is elected and during that four-year term does not get to serve as mayor. We talked about it. So we knew that. We, sometimes things happen, and, you know, there are things you don't think about. So I don't remember thinking about the idea that you get somebody new that comes onto council and doesn't get to serve in that term. But I will say, I understood in general that that was possibly the case. And if you remember, Mr. Agajanian was asking for us to approach it differently and shorten the mayoral period to 10 months, I think, or nine months?
Nine months, nine months.
Nine months, so that everybody could get to serve. And we rejected that, because we thought that that was too short of a time, too much rotation, it would be disruptive. So point number one is, we knew what we were doing. And we, and I think it has been good these last few years to have the certainty and the predictability. So I don't have a huge problem with the way we've been doing it, but I am open to tweaks that might solve some particular problems. I know that the challenge is, when you turn one lever, you know, you're going to get something else, some other unintended consequence. So we need to be careful here. Maybe there's something around, you know, when there are two council members that come in during the same election, whoever gets the more votes gets preference. I don't know if that's a way to look at it. I don't know if there's a way to look at it which says, if you've been mayor X number of times, then you, you know, cede your next opportunity to somebody who hasn't been mayor. I think there are a couple of different ways we could approach that. I'm open to any of these tweaks. And I'm also open to leaving it the way it is. So I'm pretty much on the fence here, fairly neutral. But I would like to hear specific recommendations, and then maybe staff could kind of noodle it and see what is possible.
Actually, one of the emails that we received noted that GUSD changed its process that allows every elected to be able to serve as president one year. And part of that process, if I read it correctly, includes that every time there's an election, you know, you look at the elected members, and you're able to reshuffle right after the elections in order to make sure that everybody gets a fair shot at being president. So I think that might, if they've done the due diligence, if there's an opportunity there to correct that, we don't have to do, you know, we don't have to start from scratch if our counterparts have done it at the school district to make it fair. I'm just, look, there are two things for me. I think one is the concept of having served as mayor before, I see as an issue, because it, we are all supposed to be on equal footing when we get elected to this council, and that just gives seniority to someone that has already had the experience. And I simply don't think that that's fair. And I just want to make sure that we're creating a system that allows everybody to serve.
Okay. Councilmember Kusakian, do you have any other final thoughts?
Yeah, I have quite a few thoughts. I don't know how anyone can, like, well, let's put people's personal feelings about this aside, and again, address the issue of fairness. I do want to go back to one point. I know that Councilmember Najarian selectively chose certain segments of our discussions to show, and he missed the entire portion where I said that there will hopefully be a period when someone sees a colleague who hasn't had an opportunity to be mayor and will, and who has served mayor multiple times, will give up their seat for that person.
Yes.
And said, "He who was first shall be last." But Councilmember Najarian chose not to include that. And let me ask Councilmember Najarian, before I go on with the rest of my points, are you willing to give up your rotational seat to your colleague?
You talking about right now? This, like, next week?
Yes.
No, I intend, I intend to seek selection of mayor.
Thank you for that, thank you for that answer. So let me also say that there was a point made about, and by the way, never have I seen council members more upset by the decision from which more council members have benefited from. The decision that is the worst decision that was ever made, that hangs over their heads, that is like a dark cloud and keeps them up at night, where one of them got to be mayor, and the next one, which was Councilmember Najarian, got to be mayor as well. Here's an article, by the way, I can't show it, because I'm home, but anyone who wants to search it, the May 20th, 2016 Glendale News Press article, "Former Glendale Mayor Aron Najarian Keeps Title in Campaign for Supervisor Seat." In his bid for the seat on the L.A. County Board of Supervisors, Councilmember Aron Najarian is campaigning as a mayor of Glendale, despite turning out in the role in April. The article goes on and on. But it was a huge sacrifice to skip over a colleague, to do it for whatever political pressures that Mr. Najarian tried to convince this room of eager residents and interested participants of our civic process, that it was such a terrible thing to do that people were colluding for. So, you know, if you're going to talk straight, we're going to talk straight. This is about fairness. It's about having a process by which every council member gets an opportunity to serve as mayor. We have one colleague who has not served as mayor, and we have someone who has served the record number of times that anyone in the history of this city has ever served as mayor. Okay? So in order to make this fair and simple, there should be a part in our ordinance that says that if someone has not served as mayor, and someone else has served as mayor at least three times, or twice, or even once, the person who hasn't been mayor gets to serve as mayor over the person who has. Plain and simple. If it goes to a tie, and both people have not, maybe there were two people elected, new faces in the same election, then go to the vote count. Council, Mayor Brotman, the idea of vote totals is already written into our policy. That is part of the tiebreaker. You look at the overall percentage or the number of votes, and, you know, I can also add, for anyone who's watching this and wondering why Councilmember Asatrian, and Councilmember Asatrian, received more votes than Councilmember Najarian in the very same election. Yet because of that seniority rule that none of us foresaw would have this impact, we are now faced with a decision of denying someone the mayorship. So I would like us, I would like to, I would like to request that staff come back as soon as possible with an ordinance that helps clean up this language, that allows for individuals who have been elected by the voters of Glendale, who have not had an opportunity to serve as mayor, to serve as mayor over individuals who already have had that opportunity. If there's anyone who's watching this who cannot understand the basic fairness of this, and by the way, I would argue this point if the roles were reversed. If it had been Councilmember Asatrian who'd been mayor four times, and Councilmember Najarian who had not, I think it would be fair to make Councilmember Najarian mayor. And I felt this way when Councilmember Weaver was denied, when Councilmember Agajanian was on the verge of potentially being denied. I believe that everyone deserves the opportunity to serve as mayor of this fine city. And, you know, I don't know why everyone has mixed this issue up into the personal politics. I understand that it serves people's personal agendas. It helps make for more entertaining or exciting council meetings. But at the end of the day, we have to look at ourselves in the mirror. We have to look at our children. We have to look at the next generation of Glendale residents and future leaders, and ask ourselves, what did we do to make the policies and procedures of this institution more fair? Instead of sitting around for 16 years, wringing our hands, lamenting the unfair process, and then when a council member comes along and requests for an orderly process to be made, claiming and taking credit for it. So, you know, and one last thing, I don't know if Mr. Shelton is in the audience, but I do want to remind him that, or ask him, why my last name got stuck in his throat along with Councilmember Asatrian's. He referred to Mayor Brotman as Brotman, but he only referred to me as my first name and Councilmember Asatrian as her first name. Perhaps Armenian names just get stuck in his throat, and he's not able to clearly express them. I'm happy to teach him the correct pronunciation of Kasafyan. So that's all I have to say about this issue. I would like to have staff bring back an ordinance, if my colleagues agree with that, if we have a majority vote to do that, to ensure that someone who has never been allowed or never has been given the opportunity to serve as mayor takes precedent over someone who has already had that opportunity.
And if I could just add to that, because I brought up the tiebreaker related to number of votes, and, I mean, the issue is that that tiebreaker is only after the seniority question is addressed. So if the seniority is equal, then we go to the tiebreaker. Perhaps we can do something where we go to the tiebreaker first for the seniority, and I don't know. Again, I don't want unintended consequences, but maybe, I would support what Councilmember Kusakian is suggesting, but ask that you look at maybe some different formulas that might get us to the best outcome.
So I just want to say, I've been mayor a few times, but I've also been busting my ass up here on council since 2005. I've run four, five campaigns. I've given up a law practice. I've dedicated myself to the people of Glendale. And the fact that I was mayor and selected, selected mayor every four years should not in any way be held against me. This isn't like, from each according to his ability, to each according to their needs. This isn't some socialist thing where we dish out lollipops. I know Najarian has two lollipops already. We've got to give the others lollipops. Well, Najarian's been in line a lot longer than any of the others. So I'm not sure where Mr. Kusakian's going in that, but, you know, the whole point of seniority-
I think you're confusing socialism and democracy.
Hold on, hold on. The whole point of seniority indicates that you've been at something longer than other people, and that gives you ability and entitlements to take a position that would otherwise, everything else being equal, would otherwise go to another person.
I actually have a question on that. Is there anything in our books about seniority? Or are we all equals here?
In terms of, in terms of the-
Not this ordinance. I'm talking about when we get elected. Is there anything in our books that suggests that somehow this body needs to look at seniority? And what does seniority mean, like?
Councilmember Asatrian, other than the ordinance that we're talking about, which does look at longest continuous service as last serving a mayor, no, there's nothing else that dictates decisions made by seniority.
How about in the city? We do a lot of things based on seniority in the city. So-
Like what?
Advancements, raises, step systems. You stay longer, you get more pay. So that's based on seniority.
Employees, they are employees. They are not elected by the people.
I'm saying, in the city, we have a seniority system.
I'm specifically talking about this body.
Let's-
Mayor Brotman, can I ask a question?
Yeah, yes. Councilmember Kusakian has the floor.
I have made a clear policy request. I would like to ask the city attorney to repeat that policy request back to me, and then to inform us how soon that policy can be brought forth to council.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kusakian, so the request was to prepare language, and I'm not sure if you're asking us to prepare norms, but we can do that, so that if someone has not served as mayor, and the next person in line under our seniority rules has served as mayor, and I heard one, two, or three times, I'm not, so there was no direction on that, then that person, the person who's not served as mayor would serve as mayor. So with the intent being that obviously everybody would have an opportunity to serve as mayor during their term. Again, we would need some time to work that out, work out that language. I don't think it could be brought back next week. And I'm not sure if that's, there's other options that council wants us to look at. Just, you know, just having thought about it for the 15 minutes since it was raised, I do, again, and our concern is more about the consequences, unintended consequences, could have a scenario where somebody who's pretty brand-new to council could be elected mayor pretty much after their first year, or within their first year, assuming all the other council members that are serving have served as mayor. So that's something that you'll have to, you'll have to consider when we bring that item back. But that's what the request is, and, you know, I'll see if there's a second direction, and I'm not sure if there are alternate motions that you want us to look at, or other options to look at. I know, for example, Councilmember Najarian wanted a request, an item, this item to be brought back to conclude removing the section that says a council member-
That's next.
What I was talking about, the exclusion-
Right.
The mayor exclusion the year you're running for election.
Right. So that's another, that's another option we could bring back to council.
Councilmember Kusakian, would you entertain amending your motion to include consideration of Councilmember Najarian's point about being more flexible on allowing somebody to be mayor while they're running for reelection? somebody to be mayor while they're running for reelection?
I, I don't believe that changing the rule that allows someone to be mayor, um, during the, uh, again, it comes to fairness and I think that tries to, uh, appease council member Najarian's desires to serve as mayor a fifth time and then is going to create the other disadvantage to anyone who decides to run in that cycle against both council member Najarian and presumably, uh, council member Asatrian.
I should have been clerk, getting a nice fat salary for those 16 years that I devoted myself to the city.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, is my, is my voice not coming across clearly over-
Oh, you have the floor, you have the floor.
Okay, all right. Um, so I, I don't, uh, think that the fairness issue would be addressed, um, by that issue that was raised. So I am not inclined to consider that at this time. I would like to see the ordinance amended to simply allow for individuals who have not served and we can say, you know, they need to serve on council for at least a year before to be considered. Um, but I think that, um, I would like to have that brought forth as soon as possible for it to be considered and for the rules to be amended so they are fair and applic- uh, applied to everyone.
For the record, I just want to say the animus that Mr. Kasakian has towards me being mayor four times previous is palpable and I hope that goes on the record.
I do not, I, I do not, um, ma-
If I, if I may.
Mayor.
Yes.
Since I was referenced, I'd like to respond.
Please do.
You know, council member Najarian likes to put on the attorney hat sometimes and come at different colleagues at, including members of the public at various times, uh, putting on an air that he is more righteous than us. Um, I would like to remind him that the honorable thing to do would be for him to defer his turn to a colleague who has not had that opportunity. And I have respect and admiration for the service that council member Aaron Najarian has given to this city, but I also believe that colleagues who have not had the same opportunities he had deserve those opportunities. If he doesn't feel that way, that's up to him. I have no animosity. I have nothing against his years of service and I have told him that to him numerous times despite the sentiment never being reciprocated except when it's in his own interest for the theatrics of presentations at council.
Oh, that's a low blow.
So let's, let's, I want to get away from this back and forth. Um, I'm going to turn to council member Divine and then I'm going to see if there's a second for the motion.
And, and, and I think it's, it's plain to see how this can kind of go downhill, um, even when it, when it comes to choosing a mayor. I think it's very obvious this evening. What I would like to suggest, Mayor, is that, uh, Mr. City Attorney, you have all of our suggestions. Um, if you can, um, kind of bring back, um, information and ordinance, what, in whatever form, with some of the suggestions that we've made and then we can make a decision.
Uh, Councilmember Divine, the only thing, comment I would make is council's going to have to give me that direction. I know council member, uh, I don't know if Councilmember Kasakian's made a motion, but he's fashioned a motion and so I'll need additional direction beyond that if council so desires.
I'd like to move that.
I'll make that motion.
Well, council member Kasakian has made a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking for a second for that motion and that would allow then city attorney to come back with some maybe alternatives for us. If it, and, and point out maybe some of the consequences that could occur. We can take that, we can either turn that into an ordinance afterwards or we can ask for you to take a slightly different direction on that. So this is going to be an iterative process, but let's, we have a motion. I want to see if there's a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Just so I'm clear, the, the motion now is just to bring back language that would provide that, uh, in the event that a council member has not served as mayor, that council member would be given precedence over the next person in line if that council member has served as mayor. And I'm not sure if it was one, two or three times.
You can leave that blank.
I'll leave that blank, but I have no further direction. I'm not bringing any of, all the terms. That's the motion unless council-
And we have a second.
I just want to be sure that my idea is being rejected by my colleagues. Let's just say it's, it's rejected, that the mayor exclusion be removed, uh, for those seeking election.
Then you should make an alternate motion.
Yeah, you can, you can make an alternative motion, you can make an amendment or you can make a subsequent motion after this motion is heard.
Okay.
Unless, unless-
Subsequent motion after we vote on this?
It's, yeah, but it would have to include a, a, a motion to amend the previous motion. Councilmember Kasakian, is your motion to, to exclude all other, all other alternatives?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, let's vote on that.
I'd like to.
And let's see, because I, I kind of would like to see more alternatives.
Me too.
I want to do, I want to look at what council member Kasakian is suggesting, but I don't want to close off other alternatives that might get us to the outcome that we are looking for.
Can I make an alternative motion to-
And if council member can make a substitute motion.
Okay, I'll make a substitute motion, uh, as to what the mayor has just, uh, suggested because I think we need to see alternatives as well.
So-
Other suggestions.
Your motion would be to incorporate council member Kasakian's request.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And-
And Najarian's request and any other options that achieve the same result, which is to try to ensure that every council member has an opportunity to serve as mayor during their term.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Kasakian, is that something you would support?
To have other alternatives brought forward?
Yes.
I mean, they can be brought forward, you'll still take a majority for it to prevail, sure.
That's right. At least it will give our staff the ability to maybe look at, look at a few, um, different tweaks that could get us what we want.
But I don't want the addition of alternatives to delay the bringing back of this report to council. And so I'd like a finite timeline of when this report comes back to us.
The best I can do, council member, is to give them direction and then allow my staff to, to discuss it with city manager's staff and the innovation officer's staff and give you a timeline. I, I just don't feel comfortable doing that right here, uh, until we look at it and kind of figure out what the options are. I don't think it'll be that much time, but I, I, it can't be a week. I mean-
I would like council to at least be given what timeline you anticipate in the next few days.
Yeah, we can do that. We can, we can provide you a timeline in a couple of days.
Okay. All right, with that, we have council member Divine's motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second from council member Asatrian. All right, let's go to roll call then.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Look at that. We got to unanim- unanimity. Okay, thank you very much. And our next item?
Um, our next item is action, action item D.
Okay, could you read that into the record, please?
Um, city attorney regarding amendment to Glendale Municipal Code Section 2.04.020 relating to the mayoral selection process to remove subsection H pertaining to the best interest exception. One introduction of ordinance amending section 2.04.020 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the mayoral selection policy and the best interest except, exception to the rule requiring the appointment of the council member with the longest continuous uninterrupted service on the council. Introduced by Divine.
Okay, um, Mr. City Attorney?
Sure. Let me just briefly summarize. So this was a request, uh, to consider an amendment to the policy we just were talking about. It is a introduction for, uh, of an ordinance that would amend section 2.04.020 as read by the clerk, um, and to remove subsection H, which, uh, was the best interest finding that we talked about. Um, and I'll just read it so we're all clear about what it says. So it says, notwithstanding the provisions of this section, so this is the entire policy. In the event the council determines in its discretion that it is in the best interest of the city not to appoint the council member next in line to serve as mayor in accordance with the procedure of this section, comma, including but not limited to because of reason of mental or physical incapacity significantly limiting the ability to perform mayoral duties or criminal conviction, comma, then the council may appoint the next qualified council member pursuant to subsection B2 to serve as mayor. So that is, um, that is the section. It, it, um, it was included with the ordinance when it was brought back for introduction and was discussed in the report, uh, to provide, um, discretion to council, notwithstanding the procedure to make a decision what's in the best interest, uh, of the council. That's a discretionary decision that the council can make, uh, as long as it can articulate a reason, a basis in the record why it's in the city's best interest. It's not subject to an evidentiary hearing or evidentiary record. It's just, it's a legislative, essentially a legislative declaration by the council, uh, that it's not in the city's best interest to, to appoint the next person in line to be mayor. And so that, the request was made to, to consider removing this section and just have the policy that's adopted by the council.
Okay, well, so I'm going to put on my attorney's hat and, and I do want to disagree with the city attorney that the actions taken under this section are not legislative, they are quasi judicial. Uh, we could argue about that later. So here's the problem with this part of the law. We went through, you saw all the video that we were talking about, seniority, number of votes, uh, you know, who hasn't been mayor the longest, et cetera. We gave direction, uh, to the city attorney and that's item 10, please. Item 10 on my, on my thing. You downloaded it and it's- It's exhibit three on the, on the packet, but I have it on a slide so everyone can look at it. You guys.
Do we need to, uh, you have it?
I, I have it.
I'm going to run to the manager.
Wrong. Get ahead of time, get somehow leaked out through the clerk's office. So that's why I gave it at the last minute. Number 10. Okay, so this is the, uh, this is the direction that we gave to the city attorney. Can you scroll down? So that's everything right there. If there's a tie, the ordinance, uh, says you can't be mayor in the year you're up for reelection, it shall make the housing authority be the mayor on that. There was no discussion at all, and I've been through these tapes of those three meetings, that in any way talks about the language that was included in the ordinance. It was included in the ordinance by error. It was an error because council did not instruct the city attorney to include that. And why do I care about it? Because it's terrible language. It makes no sense at all. It talks about, uh, in the event council determines in its discretion, so notwithstanding the provisions of this section, so even if you've got the person who is going to be mayor, even in that case, council in its discretion that it is in the best interests of the city not to appoint the council member next in line may in accordance, not in, not appoint the council member next in line to serve as mayor in accordance with the procedure of this section, including but not limited to because of reason of mental or physical incapacity significantly limiting the ability to perform mayoral duties or criminal conviction, then the council may appoint the next qualified person. That is language. That is a concept that this council never, ever spoke about. Now whether it was tucked into the ordinance, that's great, but Mr. City Attorney, what did I have in mind when we talked about best interests of the city? What did Ms. Divine have in her mind when we talk about the best interests of the city? What did Mr. Brotman have when they talked about the best interests of the city? Is it the city? Is it the voters? Is it our municipal agency? Is it the residents? What type of interest? There are many different types of interests and when you say best interests, the absolute top best or preponderance of the evidence, best or not? Does it mean that a coin can be flipped? Everything that we're fighting about is contained and can be voided in this paragraph that has no meaning. It's too vague, it's too broad. What does it mean? What does it mean in the best interests of the city? Nobody knows what that means. Council doesn't know what that means and it's our law. And we told the city attorney, no offense, we told the city attorney to come back with an ordinance that reflects what we talked about and we never talked about it on January 12th, 2021, on March 23rd, 2021, or on March 30th, when we adopted the final ordinance on March 2021. Nor did staff, the presenter, come to us and talk about it. And I don't know who even that presenter was. Does Greg still work for the city?
He does.
Is he an attorney?
No.
So why do we have someone who's not an attorney developing this, this concept that has such incredible force that council never discussed? It's a mistake and it should be removed or it should be discussed amongst council members. Does it, how about if you were arrested, but you're not convicted? How about if you are seen, uh, convicted of a misdemeanor? How about if you had a stroke? Does that mean that you're mentally incapacitated? How about if you're, uh, sent away overseas as a, a soldier? How about if your work takes you somewhere? How about if your family takes you somewhere? It's a completely nonsensical section that we never, ever talked about, discussed, defined. Council didn't define it? City attorney didn't define it. It has no business being in this ordinance. It needs to be reviewed, discussed, and then we decide how we want to deal with it. That's my, that's what got me.
Okay, confused.
Yeah.
Um, do you have a motion?
I would like this section H to be brought back so council can have a more thorough discussion on what it means, on the reasons. Hopefully we're a little more specific on what reasons we can use and we, uh, we do our, our legislative act, talk about it and decide what we want to implement.
Councilmember and mayor, this is introduction of ordinance.
Well, I would just say, so it is an introduction ordinance, which you can repeal it, but if you would like to have some part of the concept in there, but have more definition to what best interest is, then you can make a motion to direct us to do that and we'll bring it back.
Well, I think the motion-
Just that term? How about the whole paragraph?
Yeah, the, the ordinance is before you is to repeal that whole paragraph because that was your request.
Right.
So, but if you want to, rather than repeal it, you want to revise it to have more definition to what is best interest?
Yes.
Then you can make a mo-
I'm willing to discuss it, but we have to discuss it as a council and make a decision.
I, you know, Mr.-
Okay, oh, let me go to council member Asatrian.
Okay. It seems like we came to a consensus on reviewing this policy in general. I'm not sure why you're trying to separate this out and how that differs, like the conver- how the conversation differs.
Respectfully, I do think, I do think it was a different concept. The earlier discussion was on what the criteria are. This is sort of the exception and I referred to it as a catchall exception, uh, in one of the council meetings when we talked about it briefly. But, uh, so yeah, that would, I, I think it would be good. And then what we will do though, if the council motion is to direct us to bring this back for further discussion, maybe give you some options on how to maybe provide more definition to this and limit, more limiting factors, we'll do that, we'll bring it, we'll bring it back with the other item, assuming it doesn't delay the first item because I know there's a desire to bring that item back quickly.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Najarian?
Yeah. I, I just have one question by me, Mayor. Um, on the first sentence and the second paragraph authorizes the council to make and not appoint that, I don't understand the language there.
So it's, it's authorizing the, the council essentially to skip over the person who's next in line if-
To make and-
I'm sorry, are you looking at the report or the ordinance?
I'm, I'm looking at the report, 3D. To make and not appoint.
That's a typo.
And that's a-
Is that a typo? What is it supposed to say?
To, to not appoint, yeah, I think it's to not appoint. What's-
Wait, to make- Wait, to make and not appoint?
Which section?
Because I read that, and I said, this doesn't make sense either.
Oh, I, I think it's to make an exception and not appoint. I think that's what it was intended to say.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it, I'm, I'm...
Okay.
I'm good.
We do have some speaker cards, we have some people on the phone. Let's hear from the public, and we have, I guess, a motion, you can restate the motion so that we're clear on it, and then we can go from there. So let's start with Alan Durham.
Mayor Brotman, how many minutes would you like?
Let's say two minutes.
Two minutes.
Timing.
Mayor Brotman, council members, I'm Alan Durham. I, I'm not an attorney, but I do not agree that this is, was ever intended to be a catch-all provision that would defeat all of the rules, you know, 1, 2, 3. The subsection H comes at the very end, and it's poorly worded. I hope the city attorney's staff does better legal wording, what they come back with, the revision to this ordinance of selecting a mayor. But to me, it's clear that the intent of this was to be focused on the selection of the next mayor, and the ability and the character of that council member to serve as mayor. And that, it's not that if the city council thought it's in the best interest of the city for any reason whatsoever, that they just say, oh, well, appoint somebody else. No, it's talking about mental, physical disability, criminal conviction. It's obviously intended to allow the city to skip over, you know, the next person in rotation, if there's something unsavory, unethical, embarrassing, to make that person the mayor. And I don't, it's not a catch-all, it was never intended to be catch-all, and it shouldn't be interpreted as Mike Garcia said, if the council votes that, just for any documented reason, they're passing over the next person in line, I think that's misinterpretation legally, and I think it's unjust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reject this amendment. This is an attempt at a political coup by Ellen Brotman and Artie. And Artie, I know more Armenian than you think I do. You seem to be spending a great deal of time thinking about me late at night. You do know that I'm a proud gay American, and I do know you like to see young Armenian boys strip in the dares and step on it. I have to reiterate to the public, Alicia Harris, a Marxist, and pedophile, and play, employed...
Okay, yeah, you're not speaking to the topic. Please sit down.
And what is the, what is the point, Brotman?
Please sit down.
What is the point?
Can we cut the mic?
Remind me of the point.
I don't need to remind you of the point. It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda, sir. And you can sit down. You sit down. You sit down and look at the agenda.
Sir, you're out, you're out of order.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to...
I'm asking what the point is. You can't be out of order.
Yeah, the point is, you have to speak on the agenda, I mean, you're out of order.
Well, you should know that before you put in a card. Please sit down.
Is it to adopt a policy?
I'm not here to tell you what's on the agenda. You're supposed to read it, and you're supposed to fill out a card and put it in.
May I take a recess real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, welcome back, city council back in session. We were in the middle of oral, of public comment on item...
I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we're back, we're back in session. Can you please keep it down?
Please take your seats, everyone. We're on item 8D in public comment. I have two more cards. I have Eric, I have Ramella, then we have some calls, and I want to make sure that, before you come up, make sure you know what the agenda item is, and that you speak to that item. This is not a time for general public comment. That is later. You can put in a card, you have five minutes, oral communication, you could talk about whatever you want. That's not what we're doing now. And I will cut off anybody that is out of order and ask them to sit down, as I just did. So let's continue. We have someone named Eric, I only have a first name. If you could come up and speak, you have two minutes, please.
Good evening, council. I must say, before we begin on H, we must talk about the United States Constitution, and it was drafted and created a country for 248 years on one piece of paper, yet you people can't write a simple mayoral secession, succeeding clause? It's embarrassing. It really is. This section, best interest, as Mr. Najarian said, is so vague. How do you have a section preceding it, clearly identifying the criteria in ordinance 2.04.2020B, Section 1, that clearly states, "The council member with the longest continuous uninterrupted service on the council since last serving as mayor, and who is not serving as mayor at the time of mayoral election, shall be selected as mayor." Is that that difficult to understand, that paragraph, which you all voted on, and then jumped to best interest? I don't understand. I really don't understand where the convolution is, where money's going, where tax money's going. This is nonsense, that we're talking about this right now, and we're talking about fairness? Excuse me, this country is based on meritocracy. And from what I see, and from what we have as electable individuals from the council, we have an individual that is from the community, representing the culture, the religious, predominantly the religious section of our community, Judeo-Christian, and we have another one who is not. And she supported a pride parade at one point through Brown Boulevard. She supported a...
Your time is up, thank you.
My dime is up, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, well, nonetheless, we know what...
Ramella Aragi. Ramella?
Hi again. I'm enjoying the show.
I'm glad.
So I'm a resident of Glendale for 30 years. Actually, I could be a mayor, maybe. Over, Mr. Brotman, you're here for seven, seven years? Oh, that's a joke. So, yeah, for me, the responsibility and framework of the mayoral duties are not clear. And once I ask Mr. Garcia that, what exactly mayor's doing here, I yet to hear from Mr. Garcia. And, yeah, for me, being a mayor, it's just sitting in the middle, middle seat, that's the advantage of being mayor, and just facilitate the meeting. So, yeah, but for me, it's very important to, next time, if you're coming back with this ordinance, to amend this ordinance, exactly the mayor responsibilities and duties be exactly clear for us. For, and, yeah, for that reason, then, as I said, two years coming here, so I don't know what the mayor is doing here. So, yeah, I need that. I need to hear that, exactly what are mayor's responsibilities, and what, and what are exactly, yeah, I mean, I need that, I need to know that, what exactly mayor's doing here.
Our first caller is Margaret V. Margaret, you're on air, you have two minutes. Margaret V., okay. Our next caller is Anna Owens. Anna, you're on air, you have two minutes. Our next caller is Hans Johnson. Hans, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Glendale Council. I want to be clear that I am here representing East Area Progressive Democrats and our 100 members in Glendale. I want to speak in support of the comments of Councilmember Kasakian, Mayor Brotman, and of Councilmember Asatrian in the most recent debate. The emphasis on fairness, the respect for recent election outcomes, and the respect for the higher vote-getters in the selection and the rotation of the mayorship...
Excuse me, Hans. Hans, sorry to interrupt you, but we're on a different topic now. I would need you to speak to the agenda item.
I will speak to action item 8D and the interest of public interest consideration...
Yes, that's it.
...in the consideration of the mayoral rotation. It is wrong to reject any consideration of the public interest in the rotation of the mayorship. I want to speak in rejection of this amendment and in support of maintaining public interest provisions in the respect of the rotation of the mayorship. I also want to speak about what is not in the public interest. I want to recognize that a former, that council member Najarian emphasized in a previous comments before this council, using words like "degenerate," and calling his sister to speak before this council in flagrant opposition and defiance of the human rights of LGBTQ people.
Okay, Hans, Hans, please.
To myself, I also...
This is not what we're doing today. I mean, I gotta be even-handed. I don't want, this is not a time for people to be attacking council members. We're talking about in ordinance. We're talking about whether to include...
Ordinance includes, the ordinance includes public interest provisions that need to be maintained, they should not be rejected. There are, there are ultimate issues of fairness in what comes up between consideration of criteria that are usually considered by the council in the rotation of mayorship, and public interest considerations are warranted and need to be maintained. If things come up at the last minute, and if council members make statements such as mocking the first partner and the governor of the state of California, as happened at the February 6th meeting of this council, that has very significant implications for the budget and for the respect and intergovernmental relations of the city of Glendale.
Okay.
That needs to be respected, and public interest needs to be maintained.
Thank you, Hans.
I interrupted him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. Our next comment is by Drew Nazarian. Drew, you're on air, you have two minutes. Drew Nazarian. Okay, our next comment is by Robert Lucero. Robert, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hello, city council. I can see I'm watching in, from a city over from y'all. It looks like you guys are not too popular, I should say. It looks like you guys' provision, you guys are voting on, I don't know if you guys are in violation of the Brown Act or not, but you guys literally pass the torch amongst each other, and the gentleman before me, that wanted to rise up and give his whole speech and his whole platform, supporting some of y'all, I don't see any democracy here, if you believe in democracy, but we are the California Republic. And every time you guys speak in democracy, I think the thing we should understand is, even if you guys have the popular vote, some of us that are the singular vote, that oppose some of these measures, should be heard. I don't know what you guys are gonna do down there, and the gentleman before me is talking about a budget, the first gentleman to spoke is an attorney. We have a woman in there trying to ask how you guys conduct your business, but you continue to put along the fact that, let's stick to section, what is it? Section 2.04.020? Is that how far we are along? I don't think we are. Your guys' city council is a concern to the city that I'm in, in the city of Aspiria and the city of Victorville. You guys have been known as part of the counties that are down there for shipping us your homeless, shipping us your guys' problems. You guys need to get it together and figure it out, because what I see here is a bunch of gentlemen and ladies, sorry, that can't get their shit together. And I'm, excuse me, I'm gonna say that, and you're gonna cut me off for foul language, that's okay, because our country is in demise. And I hope y'all figure it out and get it together, because we're losing our democracy.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. You're out of time, thanks. Our next, our next comment is by Margaret V. Margaret, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Yes, hello. We're sick and tired of the city council members keep changing the policies, making decisions, or adopting policies that the residents don't even know, are not aware of. And you are turning this issue into a health call. And you are turning this issue into a health call. Keep the policy as it is. Every couple of years, you don't want to go back and change it only to fit your own desires and interests. I mean, playing these dirty games are not approved by the citizens of this city. We do not want communists and traitors changing things up and destroying this city all the time. And it was very, very upsetting to see how, you, Ellen, I'm sorry, you so disrespectfully treated Mr. MoHill. He's the age of your grandfather. He also speaks to your grandparents like that. As a future mayor, will you be speaking to our elders in our cities just like that, dishonoring? We do not want you to be a mayor if you're gonna be treating our people, our residents, like that. So please do not change this policy. And also, which women, mothers, and girls are you gonna represent, Ellen? This is very upsetting because you are not definitely representing my interests. And, yeah, like somebody mentioned, we are living in the United States, and this is a republic, not a democracy. You don't even know what you're doing. You're not leading it as a democratic way. You're changing things up as it speaks you. And God sees all that you're doing, and, you know, no evil will go unpunished. And you're escorting Mr. MoHill like a criminal. Mr. Mayor, what is happening? You know, this is, this is not right. And we are talking, I'm gonna speak on behalf of many, many, many residents right now. We do not want you to be changing anything right now in terms of this amendment that you want to do. And are you talking about our being righteous? Are you righteous already? Do you know what righteousness is? And do you know what fairness is?
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Thank you, you're out of time. Thanks for your comment. Our next caller is Charlene Hill. Charlene, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hi. Greetings. Good evening, Council, Mayor. I am calling under a pseudonym, frankly, because we are in a community right now that is in turmoil and not entirely safe. So when you bring up the subject of best interest, I have to say that it's really pertinent and it's really essential that you remember your roles on council to protect your citizens. This is an issue of public safety. So if it is in your power to look at someone who is up for a mayoral seat and say, hey, maybe that person is not stable because they've been trafficking in hate into our community by bringing in like January Sixers to canvas for extremist school board members and spreading lies and misinformation, and not working in conjunction with the Glendale School Board, maybe that's a problem. Maybe that's actually not safe. I don't want trash in my community. I don't want people who are threatening to store owners and threatening citizens. It's unsafe. So that's frankly what I have to say. Thank you.
Our next caller is Manuk Gregorian. Manuk, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Manuk Gregorian. I'm a father of four. I stand for America. I protect the American flag. But out of everything, I'm an Armenian. And you, Ellen, you are not an Armenian, in my book. Because when the Hitler, Mayor Brotman sent Antifa on August 22nd to counter protest parents, Armenian parents...
Okay, I'm sorry, you're off topic. You're off topic. We're gonna have to stop your call.
I'm not off topic. I'm on topic. I am on topic.
The topic is about...
I'm on topic. I'm making my point. I'm making a point. Give me my time.
Okay, I'm sorry, but we need to drop your call. Thank you. Our next caller is Denise Miller. Denise, you're on air, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Council, City staff. I'm just calling in on this particular item because I actually agree with the removal of this language as it supports and indicates that there's issues with the language altogether. And so, when you open up the language and look at the ordinance, perhaps you could look at this, as well as the seniority issue, as well as other things that do not streamline the process, that add layers, that are unnecessary, and that are not fair to all concerned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final caller will try again, Anna Owens. Anna, you're on air. You have two minutes. Anna Owens. Okay. That's all the calls.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's go back to Councilmember Najarian. Would you make a motion?
Yeah, my motion would be to revisit Paragraph H of the mayor's selection ordinance with an eye on amending it, revising it, to make it more precise and determinable as to what actions specifically may lead to council to intervene in the normal rotation process.
Is there a second?
I would actually second, but I'd like to make a comment for that. When I first looked at this policy, you know, I was going through it. I think the first point for me was, who initially initiated that first point about you have to be mayor? Because it seemed like it was safeguarding people that had already been elected. And then when I went through each of the points, I was like, well, this last point is like, it's a non-policy policy because you're putting all these brackets in and then you're saying, well, despite all of these things, you can do whatever you want. And that's not how policy should work. And so, with that in mind, I would like for us to discuss what that means because I do think it's too vague. That's where I'm at.
You second the motion?
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Councilmember Kasakian, any comments?
You know, I'll reserve my comments for when this comes back for further study and discussion. On the surface, I do think that council ought to have some latitude and have an exit valve for when there are unforeseen circumstances. But if the desire of this council is to have a deeper discussion and figure out how to fine-tune this, I'm open to that as well.
Okay. And I'm of the same mind. I think we, we need to have an escape valve. There are potentially going to be situations where somebody is next in line that could harm the city in one way or another. There could be ethical issues. There could be issues related to, you know, criminal activity, a whole host of things. So I think we need, we need some provision. But I agree that with this discussion, it's clear that there is scope to make that better, to better define that, so that we understand what are those conditions under which we might consider passing over someone. So I, I support a discussion on this. And I will ask for a roll call.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. Okay. Next item. We have two hearings.
Not the exciting stuff.
Next, our hearings. Hearing A, Public Works Regarding Vacation of a Portion of the Southeast Corner of Jackson Street and California Avenue at 246 North Jackson Street. Vacation Case Number 191V. One, Resolution Ordering the Vacation. Two, Resolution Adopting Plan Number 12-246.
Mr. Galanian, you want to kick this off?
Public hearing, if you want to open.
Oh, okay, I'll open the public hearing, 9:59 PM.
Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council, we don't have a presentation on this item. This was a previously approved project for a thirty, three-story, 11-unit rental housing project with one very low-income unit. And the property owner has requested the vacation of a portion of the southeast corner of Jackson and California to facilitate the construction of the project. There are staff available if you have any questions.
Move it.
Any questions?
No.
So this is, there are two resolutions then. Is that right?
Correct.
So you're moving eight, I'm sorry, 9A, 1 and 2.
Right, yeah.
Second.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Close the hearing.
Okay. Close the hearing at 10:00 PM. And any other deliberation? No? Then I will ask for a roll call.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. And our next item?
Our next hearing is Hearing B, Public Works Regarding Vacation of the First Alley Northeastally of Victory Boulevard between Allen and Irving Avenues. Alley 21, Vacation Case Number 190V. One, Resolution Ordering the Vacation. Two, Resolution Adopting Plan Number 12-245.
Okay, and I'll open this hearing at 10:00 PM. Do we have any questions, comments? Public comments?
We do have a caller.
We have a caller. Okay. Let's hear from the caller.
Our caller is Joshua T. Joshua, you're on air, you have three minutes.
All right, well, it won't take much longer. Thank you for hearing me out. You guys have had a crazy, politically charged night. It won't take this long. That alley, I don't know why they want to close it off or buy it, but that alley serves the community. A lot of parents, I live right across the street. A lot of parents teach their kids to ride bikes. They take pictures with the flowers. That alleyway is used by the equestrian community, the local residents. They walk it, they spend time with their kids in there. It's a nice, it's a nice big alley. I don't know if you've ever seen it. That being said, I don't see the point of selling it or closing it off to the businesses that's there. They take up our street parking as it is. They have plenty of space to do whatever they need to do. So that's all I wanted to say. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you, guys, and have a great night.
Thank you.
And no other calls?
No other calls.
Well, since we had that call, maybe we can have someone on staff just explain what the purpose is for vacating this alley, what the neighboring property owner will be using it for, why it's important.
I can tell you that, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, the intention of the property owner, the business owner, is to secure the site, the business campus, by closing this alley, vacating it. But who can provide some, Mr. Ahern?
Just over here.
It looks like he's...
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm William Ahern. I am the Senior GIS Project Manager. I'm the person who ran this project through the process in the city of Glendale. The property owner is relocating his business from one portion of Glendale. He had a very small lot. He has a lot of equipment that he wants to store, and he wants to have a secure campus to store it on. And that includes vacating the alley to do that.
Okay. And?
Didn't you just retire?
I'm semi-retired. My last date is May 9th.
Okay, I got something for you. And that's why I'm going, hey, that's Ahern.
Yeah, my last day is May 9th. I'm still coming in once a week
Good for you.
for part-time to finish off some projects like this one.
Thank you. We appreciate your dedication.
Thank you very much.
But is this an alley that gets public use?
It probably does. I, I don't think there's ever been any traffic studies there, so I can't answer that.
So Mayor, to that point, to the caller's point, it probably does get public use. But the properties north and south of the alley are owned by the property, the same property owner. So the intent is to create this secure business camp, property, as indicated by the city manager and by Mr. Ahern.
He's gonna create a secure campus like Mr. Hernandez said. He owns the property on both sides. One side off of Allen, he already has a public, he already has a private parking lot that's used for the business. And on the Irving side, he has a, there's a home there, I think, with a garage. He's also gonna be incorporating into the business too, as he closes off the alley.
Mr. Mayor, technically, I'm sorry, technically, parking is not allowed in the alley, so there should not be an impact to the property owners or residents around the site.
But it's an alley that some people are using for recreation, perhaps? I mean, it's very, I don't understand, like what the caller talked about using the alley. I believe it's a very, it's a very short stub and it's unimproved.
No, no, it's an improved alley.
Paved with asphalt.
Yeah, it's an improved alley with, like Mr. Galanian said, asphalt there. Some traffic does go through there, obviously, because it is an open alley. But people can come down from either Allen on the north side or on Irving the other side to Victory Truck. They don't need the alley to get anywhere.
Correct.
And so as long as it's not cutting off access to any other property owner to get to access the back of the property or for emergency services or utilities, staff then makes the determination that it's not necessary for public use and makes that recommendation to the council.
Can I ask, can I ask what the business is? That he has store equipment?
It's a solar company. He does solar installations for, I guess, homes.
And commercial.
Oh, and commercial.
Okay. And in staff's recommendation that we vacate this alley, resume. Okay. Any other?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, we'll close the hearing at 10:06. Thank you. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Botman?
Yes. What is next?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I believe we have five cards.
Okay, but we have Chad Kroeger and JT Bar, who have long gone, so I don't think they're here. Is that right? Ray Shelton?
My name is Ray Shelton, and I am a proud gay American. I am a member of the Windu Tribe of Northern California, which is where our rancheria is. As a person of color and a senior citizen, I am a respected tribal elder. Before speaking on the topic I would like to address tonight, I have to make one quick correction, one quick fact, and one personal objection. First, Glendale never was a sundown town. Glendale never was a racist town. No evidence of any kind has ever been produced to the public to show that claim. Second, CO2 is a plant food, people. Horticulturists flood their hot houses with CO2 to promote healthy plant growth. We need more CO2, not less. Good God. With more CO2 in the atmosphere, the deserts of the earth would disappear. We'd have forests where deserts are now. Now to my objection, back to the city clerk. Every week, she always goes on about honoring the people who lived here before. I cannot tell you how an American Indian, how offensive this is. She is not an American Indian. She doesn't speak for American Indians. The people who lived here before us were Paleolithic people. In simple English, they were Stone Age savages. They lived and died in the dirt. They had no concept of property or of land. Honoring such people is simply a tactic to honor the primitive and attempt to shame and blame America from somebody who hates America. I have lived in Glendale and worked in the Glendale school system for over 25 years. The Glendale PTA has honored me with many awards, including the Golden Oak Award for Lifetime Achievements. For 10 years, I volunteered as team leader for many events in the Glendale school districts. And last year, I was viciously and brutally removed from my classroom in front of my distressed and crying students. And what was my crime? My crime was speaking as a private citizen, as an openly gay man, at a public school board meeting. I simply told the truth about the undeniable fact of the binary, unchangeable biology of human gender and the fact that, as a gay man, I understand heterosexuality is the norm, Ellen. I know what a woman is. I helped unmask the Glendale Unified School District's advocacy of pedophilia and mental disorder called transgender ideology. And believe me, as a gay man, I can easily smell groomers and pedophiles across the room, having encountered them, Brotman, as a child. Two women orchestrated my removal from my classroom. These are the well-known pedophile and transgender advocates Alicia Haritz, who currently works at the Loca Center Valley High School, and Talene Arsenean, president of the Glendale Teachers Union. Teachers Union. During this year, they tirelessly led a smear campaign to label me a violent Nazi, to silence me. But I will not be silenced, Brotman, even if you think you have to leave.
Sir, can you just pause for just a second till we get our call back?
Guess I'm that frightening. You know, when I was a young kid, men such as them used to call me a faggot.
Just have to release some CO2. Keep going.
CO2, it's a good thing. It's plant food. We've got a minute and a half, okay, got my time back. So, I've been out, I came out as a gay man back in 1980, 44 years ago. Marched in many Gay Day parades, and I watched in growing horror as both the Glendale Unified School District and the Glendale City Council have been captured by a fascist organization known as the East Area Progressive Democrats, who advocated transgender drag queen trying to trans the gay away. For example, documented union embezzler Telly C bought his seat in Area A with $1,000, $100,000 of money from an outside special interest group, and Farid stole her seat with mysteriously appearing, unverified mail-in ballots, ballots which only showed up after Anetta had clearly won her seat tonight. But tonight, it's Alicia Harris, who resides in Sherman Oaks and is not a resident of Glendale, who is engaging in election interference by sending you that letter and working behind the scenes to get Artie, Brotman, and Ellen to get her that seat, because they hate Ara. But I know Artie's last name, and I know Ellen's last name, Tavajan. Artie Tavajan. Ellen Tarvajan.
Your time is up.
Your pronunciation is off.
Kazikian. Vile.
Not know what I was walking into today.
Yeah, they're all types.
Not here for any of the items that we discussed earlier. There was so much hatred, I do have to say. And I'm really, like, appalled by it, and I can't believe that it's allowed here. But anyway, I'm just going to talk about my event, our event, coming up. My name is Guyenne Kajikian, and I'm representing Be the Happy, and an upcoming event called Aim for Love. I'm on the board of Aim for Love, and we are trying to, and I'm also a mother of a 16-year-old autistic son. This here Aim for Love project is a community fair. It's going to be on April 13th at Verdugo Park from 11:00 to 5:00. And we're dedicating this event this year to raise funds for displaced children in Armenia who need the ABA services that our kids do get here. We do have professionals now from the organization that are training folks in Armenia to be able to give these children ABA therapy, and so we're raising funds so that we can train more people there, so that, you know, if my child was born over there, he wouldn't have gotten the therapy that he gets. So, I just wanted to see how the council members and the mayor can help us promote this event, so that we can have businesses there buy booths and also just promote it to the public, so that the public can come and maybe donate money. Now, the funds are going to be used for training again, those that are in Armenia, and also for any families that don't get government assistance or any type of medical care here. We also help a lot of people here that do not have those services, and they're free to them. So, I just wanted to get some feedback of how we can promote this event.
Okay, well, normally, the oral communication is not a back-and-forth conversation, but I think what I would suggest you do is write an email, include whatever information you have about your organization and the event, share it with all of us, share it with the city manager as well, and we'll let you know if there's anything any of us can attend or if there's anything...
Yeah, it would be great if you guys can attend or even just post it on your website or even, like, on your social media. It would be really greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I actually did. Two comments, actually. One, since you were announcing an event, you could have done it at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep, I know. I didn't realize that. Yeah, thanks. I'm going to next week.
But, um, city manager Galanian, I know we've talked about this in the past, but especially if it's a nonprofit, and there are events happening in our city utilizing our city social media or outlets to let community members know. I know, for example, this last Sunday, we had Zakazar at Verdugo and whatnot. So, there's a lot happening in the city, and I want us to be able to help promote any of these wonderful events. And just as a point, specifically, people with autism is a very, very dear to my heart issue. Used to do the walk every year to raise funds, and so I will, I will personally definitely make the time to be there.
Yeah, Artie's also been very helpful. Denise Miller has been to an event of ours, so...
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Joseph Kusconian.
Mayor Brotman, city council members, thank you so much. I just wanted to come and talk to you all about the Tesla charging stations on Harvey. I myself have a Tesla, and I don't know if any one of you all have a Tesla or have witnessed or have gone through the Harvey charging station, but unfortunately, it's located in the In-N-Out parking lot, and yeah, it takes a while for you to get into that parking spot, causing a lot of traffic for those who are just simply just going to go charge their car. So, it's something that I wanted to bring up so that our city could look into. If there is recommendations, and I don't know if it's possible, for city council to recommend a new driveway layout for the In-N-Out parking lot, so that it's easily accessible for the Tesla cars to go in and charge, but currently, it creates a bottleneck and a long traffic down, down the street, where you have to wait a very long time in order to get in. So, and sometimes, you know, people are waiting in line to get into the In-N-Out parking station, but they don't know that we're going on the other side to get into the Tesla parking lot where it's the charging station. So, it's definitely in need in our city, where we need more Tesla charging stations. We only have, there is none in La Cañada, there's none in La Cressena, there's none in Montrose, there are three in Burbank, and there's only one in the city of Glendale. So, something that we should definitely look into. Another thing that I also wanted to bring up is there was an American flag hanging over there, and unfortunately, it was ripped, and for a couple of weeks, it was just hanging like that. Thank you for taking that down, but I would like for the city to put another American flag up as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Before you go, before you go, some late-breaking news.
Okay.
From our city clerk, our assistant city clerk, our city clerk, Rouse is installing Tesla chargers.
Thank you very much.
Where, Rouse here? Right across the street. There you go.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, for the speaker's benefit, that charging station in the In-N-Out parking lot is a privately owned, uninstalled charger, so it doesn't belong to the city.
Yeah, I understand that, but it also is causing traffic for the city of Glendale. If you, if you actually go during the peak hours, you guys could see how much traffic it actually causes. Councilmember Divine, I see you over there shaking as if you've experienced it, so...
I was just, I was just in that area, and the lot, that traffic was horrendous.
Yes, it's horrendous. It causes a traffic chaos in that area.
Nightmare.
I understand that it's a private property, it's something that we all can do, but as the city council member, it's important for us to have the streets open or at least some sort of guidance for the owner of that property, like, you know, if you are going to have these stations here, like, let's figure out another way. Thank you.
So, I have a question, like, is that the owner of the property that put that Tesla, that charging station in?
More than likely, council member, yes.
Now, can they just do that without a permit? Maybe that's something we should look at.
There is no conditional use permit for the installation of the chargers. It's on private property. They take up a space to, to trying to regulate that is, is something you don't want to... I guess we could look into it if the council's desire, but I wouldn't.
Well, it, it reminds me, I mean, we, we have other drive-throughs. Like, I know the one on Star, Starbucks on Central and...
Central in California, also another crazy one, yes.
Which is, which is a nightmare. I mean, I'm sure, you know, whatever counts were given to us, they've exceeded that, you know, they're getting a lot more traffic and it backs up. So, in situations where we see we've, we've issued a permit, and then there are activities that are spilling onto the city streets, causing traffic problems, do we have any mechanism for going back and asking for that to be reconsidered or something to mitigate the impacts? I don't know if that's, if that's an authority we have, how we go about doing it.
I mean, at this point, just ask us to look at agendizing it, bring it back next week if you want, and for, and then we can do research.
Thanks for...
Thank you. Thank you all so much for your time and how great you think.
Joseph, that flag, we'd like to take credit, but I believe that's Kevin DeLeon's...
Okay.
Eagle Rock.
Yes, we should write a letter to their office and encourage them to put another flag up.
There you go.
Thank you.
He has other bigger issues to contend with right now.
Mayor Brotman, council members, I'm Alan Durham. Thank you for letting me speak. Tonight, I just wanted to bring up what I feel might have been noncompliance with the Brown Act in a recent board meeting. This was the Design Review Board Meeting of March 14th, 2024. I'm not an expert on the Brown Act, but my general understanding is that public access is required, which was granted both by TV and in person, but also that public comment is to be allowed. And as everyone here knows, well, you can come in person, which I usually try to do, but at that DRB meeting, I was at home. I couldn't go in person, and so I wanted to phone in on the phone lines that are always, you know, shown on the screen. And there were three agenda items. I wanted to speak on the second one. It was, the total meeting was about an hour and a half. My agenda item I wanted to speak on was the second one. I started calling in, you know, sometime after the meeting started, and I got a recording, you know? The public comment phone line is closed, and please call back during a public meeting. And I got this repeatedly. At first, I thought, well, maybe they'll figure out that the phone line's not open, but they weren't. So, for over an hour, I was trying to phone in. I finally thought of calling Councilmember Kasakian, because, you know, the, the meeting started at 5:00, didn't really get to the agenda items until 5:30. The city's closed. You can't get anyone on the phone, obviously, but Artie had given me his cell phone number, so I, I called him. He was kind enough to return my call and say that he'd try to get in touch with somebody. And that took about the 1:15 mark, the city planner told the board, you know, there's been a problem that the phone lines, you know, haven't been open. And my agenda item had gone by, you know? It was over within the first hour, and no one at the meeting knew that the phone line was down for an hour and 15 minutes. And so, there's no way to know. Were there other callers? I mean, I think there might have been, particularly on this agenda item. It was a remodel and addition in my general neighborhood, and there had been a huge sign posted on the front lawn of the upcoming design review hearing. So, the neighbors would have been very aware of it, and it's a little hard for me to believe that there was probably no interest in anybody calling in on that particular project. But we'll never know, but, and who is going to keep trying to call in after the agenda item's been voted on and passed? I mean, no one's going to stay on the line. I did, but they wouldn't have known that the line was going to get to be opened. So, then they announced, we'd still like to hear from you. And my comment was, well, it's kind of water under the bridge, because you already voted to approve it, and what good is it going to do for me to speak now? And I just feel like if, if the phone line was down for the first two agenda items and no one was able to comment via phone, that I question whether those, those votes were actually valid under the Brown Act, since people couldn't get through, they don't know who might have wanted to get through or what comments they would have gotten. So, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, anything?
Sure, we can take a look at it, Mr. Mayor. The Brown Act does not require the call-in option. It's our policy, may have been a violation of our policy, so we'll take a look at that and see if there's any remedy that needs to be had.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We have Eric. Do we have any, anyone on the phone?
Hello, once again. Again, today was a great example of how our constitutional republic has degraded in 248 years to a point that a simple mayoral appointment is, it's just filled with high school drama. Doesn't make any sense. The ordinance should be clear, and it is clear, if you look at the first section, but aside from that, it seems as though there is a specific amount of pressure put on Councilman Najarian at this time to rescind his mayoral, his seeking of mayoralship in favor of Ms. Asaturian. Well, to lay out a few things about Ms. Asaturian's council member time, very soon after her term, she decided to run for higher office. Now, to me, that seems like she has more of a personal aspiration than an aspiration to serve the community she ran for the seat for locally. So, in that sense, it seems as though she didn't win in her primary, therefore, she's fallen back, and now she wants to become mayor. But there's a clear stipulation in the ordinance that seniority is next in line. It's very clear. Also, aside from that, as a member of this community, as a person who has ties to the community going back 50, 60 years, some 100 years in this community, I've never heard of Glendale having a mayor selection process issue in the history of Glendale. This is very unique. Maybe this ordinance, as you're going to take a look at, see if you're going to keep it, see if you're going to amend it, see what are you going to do about it? People were talking about fairness, whatever is, this is a meritocracy in this country. There's nothing about fairness. You don't get your job because it's fair. You don't get a raise because it's fair. You don't get to, you know, not get cancer because it's fair or not fair. This is life. This is merit when it comes to what you put in, how the community receives your actions as public servants, and they reelect you, they reelect you multiple times if you're doing a good job, such as Mr. Najarian, or else he wouldn't be here so long, he wouldn't have such a long history. And I believe that's a testament to his dedication... And I believe that's a testament to his dedication to the community and also what he will bring as mayor. In another sense, I believe that if you look at the numbers, the majority of the citizens in Glendale, about 76% of the households are Jewish and Muslim. They're religious people with devout religious beliefs and they have a primary interest in family values. Glendale has been known for the longest time to be a family-centric city. We promote family. We promote single-family ownership of properties, not rental transient property developments as we've seen in the past two decades. Therefore, we have an, we have an option between two mayors, two candidates for mayor. We have one who supports that position and we have another that, and it's been documented and this is nothing disparaging about the individual, but it goes to the character and how the character relates to the character of the community. We have another individual running for mayor who attended an event that was very disrespectful to the Armenian heritage and that was Ms. Asaturian. She was there, there was a performance, she did not, she did not say, she did not make a statement about the performance she attended and the Armenian community was not very happy about that. As a leader of the Armenian community, as a council member of a very large Armenian city, on top of that, she had an interest to have a pride parade, it was stated, down Bram Boulevard, if it could be produced and promoted for the LGBT community. Now, I have nothing against LGBT community. I have nothing against any community in America or around the world. However, does that serve the greater purpose of the residents in Glendale? Does that serve the religious beliefs of the residents of Glendale? Does that serve the family-centric values of Glendale? We do not believe so.
Time is up, thank you.
And we support Mr. Najarian for mayor.
Thank you. Our two callers.
Our first caller is Frank Wilson. Frank, you're on air, you have five minutes.
I guess I'm just disappointed and I have a question. How does the council feel about being lied to? And I called earlier and I stated my position on a certain topic, then a gentleman stood up and lied to you and I tried to call back with the rebuttal and I was refused to give the rebuttal. So my issue, I guess at this point now, is why cannot, excuse me, I was not worded properly, why can a citizen not give a rebuttal over the phone to someone who's lying to the council? I know we're not supposed to talk about topics, I'm being very vague, but my question is, how come I can't give a rebuttal to when somebody lies to you?
We don't, yeah, this is not about question and answer. If you have a comment, please just provide it. Thank you.
Well, the comment is you were lied to tonight about the Victory Alleyway. It is secured, he has fencing all around his property and you were lied to and you still voted for it without even knowing anything. So that's my comment. Have you gone and looked at it? Have you been there? Have you seen that he has fencing all around his property and he doesn't need to do it? You are supposed to represent the people of Glendale, not the business owner who has his employees come from out of town, from all over the country, because the plates are from all over the country, and not providing anything to Glendale. Yet the people around here pay taxes. You know, we love this city. These people who say this city is bad or whatever, they're insane. Go live somewhere else. This is one of the cleanest and nicest cities I've ever lived in my entire life. So you need to represent the people and not a business owner who brings his people in from other states. Now, you shut off an alleyway that the community uses, all because some man lied to you about securing property, which was a complete lie. It's all secure, there's fencing all around it, there has been since the day I lived here. So you were lied to, I don't know if he's like greasing wheels, I don't know, but you were lied to. My issue is, why can't somebody have a rebuttal? That's something you should address because if you're going to be lied to, we should be able to say, you're being lied to, here's the proof. But you guys don't care about that, right? Am I, I mean, you can't, you've talked to other people, but you're not going to talk to me.
Yeah, this is not a Q and A, so we're not going to respond to you.
But you responded to other people. Did you not respond to other people? Yes or no?
We don't do rebuttals, it's not how these meetings work. We have public comment, the public can say what they would like and then we listen to-
Maybe that's good how they work.
Excuse me, we listen to the propensity of the comments and we make a decision. So that's how it works.
Okay, but if you're going to be lied to, why can't there be a rebuttal? Like, think about it.
Yeah.
Any situation-
Okay, we already answered your question.
Oh, my God. All right, well, I guess the guy greased the wheel good enough for the city council.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, I'm going to speak. I was not going to speak today. I've never spoken at a city council meeting before. This is why I'm one of the last callers. And after hearing some of the disgusting things that about Ellen Asaturian, I could not believe what I was hearing and I could never forgive myself if I didn't call in. Ellen, we stand with you, the Armenian community stands with you. We see how much you're doing. One of the agenda items today, you made sure to even ask that the program be translated into Armenian as well. So you're doing so much for the Armenian community and this is how some Armenians treat you. And I say some because they're definitely not the majority. So I just want to say, don't listen to critics. The guy that spoke on an agenda item earlier said you're not an Armenian and he's like totally crazy, he's associated with extremists. In fact, most of the people that criticize you are either well-known extremists or they're associated with them. So these are the type of people that criticize you and Ellen, we stand with you, the Armenian community stands with you and the majority of the people stand with you. So don't listen to the extremists and don't give up. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Okay.
Well, before we adjourn, I do want to make a comment because the gentleman, the gentleman that's having a conversation in the back, if I may address him, Savanna?
Do you want it to come forward or?
No, I just, I don't know where you get your information from and I don't know how much you know me. I'm speaking to you. Yes, yeah. It's, I, well, this is my time now and I'm going to address some of the things you said. I don't know what in your book means to be Christian, but I'm baptized. If you go to St. Mary's Church, you claim to have been part of this community. When you walk into St. Mary's Church, those two photos are my uncle and my cousin. My family established that church. So just because you see some videos and just because I don't talk about it because separation of church and state, doesn't mean that you know me. So please, next time that you actually have questions or think that you know me or my background or my family and my family values, I invite you, this is my time to speak, you will listen. You will listen. You will, I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
He's out of order.
You're out of order. Okay.
It's really hard for you, aren't you, isn't it? It's easy for you to come up here and make, it's easy for you to come up here and make up lies.
Let's, okay, let's stop this. We're going to stop this now.
So next time you have questions, you're more than welcome to come and ask me them before you start making accusations about me.
Enough.
You're a public speaker.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, understand your-
No more.
Understand your sir.
Sir, no more.
Okay.
Okay, you can leave if it bothers you. All right. Our next item, I know, is a special adjournment.
Yes, as I stated, I would request that we adjourn this meeting in the honor and memory of Ralph Tefenkyn.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a second.
Good night, everyone.
10:40.